Good evening, we're going to get started, please, if everyone could take their seats. So, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular Fairfax Town Council meeting, December 2nd, 2015, about 7:05. And first, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to get a motion to approve the agenda, but I know there's a couple of things. We're going to move the proclamation number three to be number two and switch those. And I believe the town manager has an announcement or a request regarding one of the agenda items. You need to have your mic on.
Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Anyway, yes, we'd like to pull item 16, that's dealing with the second reading of the toilet ordinance. We're recommending we just continue that to January. That will give staff some time to work out some details with the Marinian Association Realtors who have expressed concern related to the ordinance.
Okay, with that, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, Garrett, going forward, I'm not exactly sure why this ordinance was first brought before us, didn't seem to be that much of a clamor in the community. But going forward, can we make sure that we get all the stakeholders to the table when we bring things forward? That way, we'll have the consensus of the larger group and we'll avoid these sort of kerfuffles. Thanks.
Just to be clear, that wasn't new, that has been in the ordinance since 2001.
What was it, the ordinance?
The change-out at point-of-sale.
It wasn't the point-of-sale, it was the...
Okay.
Let's leave it at that.
Point taken. All right, so with that, could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Okay, Weinsdorf, in second.
Yes.
Renee, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Let me just quickly read the meeting protocol. "The mayor shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and the council has a responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at council meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. Please turn off all cellular phones or place in the silent mode, and we'll review the agenda at 10 o'clock PM." Just quickly, I just want to remind folks that we have a special meeting, it's a short item that we're going to place at the very end of the agenda. And just a few announcements. The Fairfax Food Pantry is Saturdays 9 to 11 at the Fairfax Community Church, $23.98 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. Volunteers are always needed, and this is a great opportunity. If you need food, any of your friends or neighbors need food, they don't need to show proof of need, so please attend. Also, we have vacancies on a number of boards and commissions, three on the Open Space Committee, one on the General Planning Implementation Committee, two on the Volunteer Board, and one on the Tree Committee. Applications are available at Town Hall, on the Town website, or from the Town Clerk, Michelle Gardner. There's a Fairfax Open Space fundraiser, December 11th at 19 Broadway with Olive and the Dirty Martinis. The doors open at 8:00 PM and the band starts at 9:00. They'll also have raffle tickets. Jamie Redford is one of -- Robert Redford's son is one of the band members, and he's donated, I think it's a weekend, at the Sundance Resort. So it's a great prize. So with that, the Holiday Crafts Fair, Saturday, December 12th at the Pavilion from 11 to 5:00. The Holiday Horse and Wagon Rides, Sunday, December 13. Meet at the Parkade Steps from 11 to 2:00 PM. Holiday Wreath Making, Caroling and Potluck, Sunday, December 13 at the Women's Club, 2 to 5:00 PM. And just an announcement, the Town Hall offices will be closed from December 24th through New Year's, reopening Monday, January 4. We were going to introduce a new town employee, our zoning technician, Michelle Levinson, and she had a family emergency, so she won't be able to be here, so stay tuned for our next meeting, which will actually be January 13 due to holidays. So with that, I think we're going to go to the first agenda item, Administration of Oath of Office to Elected Officials. Michelle?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, tonight is the meeting where we swear in the newly-elected council members, the newly-elected treasurer, town treasurer, and town clerk. However, people may have noticed these offices were not on the November ballot because there was only one person who pulled papers, nomination papers, for each office. So the town council voted to cancel the election, saving close to $15,000 for the town, and appointed each of the nominees for each of the offices. So with that, I deputized the town manager to administer the oath of office to each of the newly-elected people, because I'm one of them. And I didn't figure out how to do it for myself.
So would you like to just come on down here for your oath of office?
I guess I might add that those people's names are the incumbent, council members, Peter Lacks and Renee Goddard, and we have a new town treasurer, Janet Garvin, and I'm Michelle Gardner, the town clerk.
Okay, that sounds good.
Do you like us one at a time?
Yeah.
Do it all at the same time.
After we say our names, you can...
Yeah.
I state your name.
Aye, Renee Goddard.
Aye, Peter Lacks.
Aye, Janet Garvin.
Aye, Michelle Gardner.
Okay. Sorry. Do solemnly swear that I will support, defend...
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend...
...the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
...and the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California.
...against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
...and that I will bear true faith and allegiance...
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance...
...to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California...
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
...that I will take this obligation freely...
And I will take this obligation freely.
...without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion...
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
...and I will, and faithfully, sorry, and that I will, will, and faithfully...
And that I will and faithfully...
...discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Okay. Congratulations. All right.
So congratulations, everyone, and we're very fortunate to have such a highly qualified team. So with that, I'd like to move on to our next agenda item, which is a presentation of a proclamation in memory of Lou Vicaro. I'm going to read it from the dais, and then I'll come down and present the formal proclamation, and we'll take a few photos. "Town of Fairfax, proclamation in memory of Louis Lou Vicaro. Whereas Lou was born in 1925 in San Francisco and as a boy used to summer in Fairfax, traveling by ferry and train in the days before the Golden Gate Bridge was built. And whereas, as a young man, Lou joined the Navy and served on a submarine chaser in World War II, returning to California and settling in Fairfax. And whereas Lou Vicaro and his wife of 57 years, Jean, made their home and raised their three children, Anthony, Chris, and Valerie, in Fairfax, next door to the house where Lou summered as a child. And whereas Lou's son, Chris, currently occupies the very house where Lou spent so many happy childhood summers. And whereas Lou was the proud and loving grandfather of Gianni, Leah, and Louis. And whereas Lou loved gardening, golf, tennis, hunting, fishing. Fairfax Creek runs along the border of Lou's property, and he often spoke of the many types of fish, birds, other wildlife and flora, both in and along the creek, and how they changed over the years. And whereas Lou recounted the opening day of trout season in Fairfax used to be a school holiday to allow students to go fishing, and he was active in ensuring the health of the creek and its fish. And whereas Lou spoke of the early days of Fairfax, that on the property across the street from him, the owners grew apples, grapes, peaches, and walnuts and sold them at a stand on Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. And whereas Lou could always be found, Monday through Friday, at 9:00 AM at the Barefoot Cafe, enjoying breakfast with his buddies, including his lifelong best friend, Joe Bruce, and lifelong best friend Eugene, Gene Ardito, who met his wife through Lou. And whereas Lou, an optimistic and sociable guy, was also an active participant in local Fairfax government, often showing up at town council meetings to share his views and ideas. And whereas Lou had a well-lived life, and Fairfax is a better place because of him. Now therefore, be it hereby proclaimed, in honor of the memory of Lou Vicaro, December 2nd, 2015, is Lou Vicaro Day in the Town of Fairfax." I also want to mention that I felt that I wanted to give a gift to the town to honor Lou even more. And so with that, I've had a plaque made for Lou that I'll briefly read, and this will be placed in the Pavilion. And eventually, when we redo the Pavilion, we'll have more opportunities for people who have contributed to the town, lived in the town, to have plaques or bricks or something of that nature. Let me just read this quickly, and then I'll come down. "In memory of Louis Lou Vicaro, a longtime Fairfax resident and angling enthusiast. Lou was a lifelong advocate for the health of Fairfax Creek. Our sincere thanks for Lou's many contributions to our town. Fairfax Town Council, December 2nd, 2015, Lou Vicaro Day." So I'd like to have Jean, Anthony, Chris, and Valerie come up. I'll just show you the plaque, because it's going to be a bit beautiful. Oh, it's beautiful. Look at that. I'll put it to you. And then... And then I'd like to present you all with the proclamation for your husband and your children.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I'm going to cry too. I do this a lot, so...
This is so wonderful, thank you.
You're welcome. He was a wonderful man, and we're very lucky to have had him in Fairfax. So let's take a photo. Yeah, let's get the grandkids up here. Wait a second. Now Jean, you need to be closer to me, so you won't get hidden. Okay, and how about the grandkids get in front? I'm sorry. We'll all miss him, now you guys have to squeeze in.
Thanks, all of you.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on, we also, and I know the Vicaros need to take off, someone needs to catch a plane. But we're also having a proclamation in honor of our town treasurer for eight years, Barbara Petty, and Barbara, maybe you can wend your way towards the front. So I'll do the same thing, I'll read this from the dais, and then we'll take a photo, and maybe your husband can come up too, and we can have a photo with the two of you. So, "Town of Fairfax, proclamation in honor of Barbara Petty. Whereas Barbara Petty served as the elected Fairfax Town Treasurer for two terms totaling eight years, and is now stepping down. And whereas Barbara also served on the planning commission for two years, leaving to become Town Treasurer. And whereas Barbara has lived in Fairfax for many years, together with her husband and son Jim and Patrick, and their three beloved cats, one is 21 years old. And whereas Barbara is a certified public accountant who brought over 20 years of expertise to her role as Town Treasurer, and specializes in tax matters as well as estate and trust administration. And whereas, in addition to her accounting expertise, Barbara brought her calm competency to work with the town to put Fairfax's financial house in order. And whereas Barbara dedicated countless hours on campaign committees for local parcel tax measures, F, I, and last year, measure J. And whereas Barbara has an infectious laugh and works very well with everybody. And whereas Barbara is a strong supporter of local schools and local businesses in addition to the sports she has given to the town. And whereas Barbara has devoted herself to the Town of Fairfax and its citizens, and has made innumerable contributions to the Town of Fairfax, serving the public with integrity and intelligence. And whereas Barbara is respected by the Town Council, her peers, the citizens of Fairfax, and everyone who has worked with her due to her competence, conscientiousness, and big smile. Now therefore, be it hereby proclaimed, that in acknowledgment of her dedication, commitment, exemplary service, and many contributions to the town and to the community, the Town of Fairfax thanks Barbara Petty and wishes her success in her future endeavors." So here's your proclamation.
Thank you very much.
So I have one last item as mayor, and then we'll move on. So...
Actually, yeah, item four.
I don't even know what item four is. Oh, yeah. Oh, right. So item four is adoption of a resolution urging the California Public Utilities Commission to examine the fairness and reasonableness of the power charge indifference adjustment, also known as PCIA, to reject PG&E's proposed increase to the PCIA and to apply some of the $1 billion that they've collected to offset PCIA fees paid by Marin Clean Energy customers. And let me just explain, many of you are Marin Clean Energy customers, and what PG&E charges is something called the PCIA, which you will see on your bill. And what that charges, it's called the departing load, it's for them to kind of deal with all the energy that they've purchased. It's been found that they have not planned their energy purchases well, so they're still charging PCIA, how many years since MCE was created, and how many people have departed. And in a couple of years, you will pay about 30 million, MCE customers will pay 30 million in PCIA fees. So along with this is they've collected $1 billion to date, and they plan to retire that, which means they keep it. And we're asking two things of the PUC. One is to not approve PG&E's request to increase the PCIA fee significantly, about 96 percent. And the other part is that we're asking CPUC to have PG&E at least pay back, out of that $1 billion, some of the fees that they have collected back to MCE customers. So we're hopeful that by passing this resolution, we will get the attention of CPUC. So with that, council members have questions, comments? No? I'd like to open it up to public comment. Seeing none, we'll take it back to the council, I'd like a motion to approve this item.
Mayor, I'll move resolution next in order of the Town Council, the Town of Fairfax, urging the CPUC to examine the fairness and the reasonableness of the power charge indifference adjustment, the PCIA, to reject PG&E's proposed increase to the PCIA and to apply some of the $1 billion to offset PCIA fees paid by MCE customers.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moving on to the next item, which is reorganization of the Town Council and selection of the mayor and vice mayor. Garrett, did you want to do the staff report briefly?
Sure, it's that time of year, typically after November election, you select the positions of mayor and vice mayor, as typically everyone serves one year in a position. And so really, what happens is when you make your selection, we'll take a break, and then switch seats, and then ready to go.
I think one of the things that perhaps you forgot to mention was, a couple of years ago, we had a situation where a couple of us had been on the council less than a year. And so rather than doing the normal order of the rotation, there was a change made. And I think we have that situation again with one member that's been on less than a year. So with that, I know I'm jumping ahead, but I would suggest that we appoint Renee as mayor. She's done a great job as vice mayor, and then I think we should have some discussion for vice mayor, but my suggestion would be, the next order would be to propose John Reed to be vice mayor. So I would like to ask council members to have some discussion.
I believe, first of all, the vice mayor always accedes to the position, particularly when he or she has done such an extraordinarily good job and represented the town so ably as Renee has for this past year. And I'm sure Peter is agreeable to the fact that so recently appointed, although has jumped in and done, I think, an extraordinary job in such a short period of time, and brought great conversation to the council, and brought, you know, the acuity of his legal practice to our discussions. I think you would agree that it should flow this year to John, and then I think, quite logically, that a year from now, when John accedes as the vice mayor to the mayor, you would, of course, become the vice mayor at that time.
Yes, actually, I was, I suggested that as well to John. I would, I think I'd benefit from another year of experience before assuming vice mayor and then mayor, so I think that's kind of a, it's actually kind of a relief, because I was looking at sort of the natural progression of things, and it's being in the hole, as they say in baseball, and then being on deck, I'd appreciate another year of being on the council before stepping up to those positions, so yeah, I think that's an excellent suggestion.
Okay, well, I'm happy to do it, I mean, it's, it's, you're kind of in the hot seat in the mayor spot, and, you know, Renee, I think, is going to hold down that hot seat pretty well, you know, and I'm sure she's a little bit nervous, she's expressed that in the past to me, but I think you're going to do great. And I'll be happy to fit in between the two of you guys, so that you get some more water under the bridge, Peter, but I think you're also going to do great too, so. So be it, so.
Can I just add, as the outgoing mayor, first of all, I want to say, Peter, you've been so gracious and so, you know, open to these kinds of things, and really brought a lot to just hitting the ground running as a council member, and so really appreciate your graciousness here tonight. And to Renee, I want to say, Renee has always said to me, she said, "I'm the vice," she loves to use that term, and she's been a great vice mayor. I've disappointed her, because I think I've been at every meeting, but she's... But we've been a good team, and I think one of the accomplishments we did together was getting the emergency operations plan done with the help of the disaster council, so I think it'll be in great hands, and I will be happy to relinquish my seat and move over. So did you want to make any comments, Renee? Or not? And then we can take a vote.
Now first, you've got to have a motion on the floor.
Oh, yes, oh.
That's right.
Well, we also have to have public comment, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting myself.
That's okay, we can move right on to public comment.
Okay, so open it up to public comment, thanks, Renee. Ah, seeing none.
So Mayor, I would like to move Vice Mayor Goddard as our next mayor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I would like to move John Reed as our vice mayor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Well, with that, yay!
So Barbara, you don't get to get off that easily, where you just move to the right. This is, this is actually a rather big deal. I, I'm speechless, which is not my general state of being, but I do want to say a few things to Barbara. I think that the plaque that we will be presenting to her will speak a lot, but then I want to follow up with some very personal things to expose to all of you. So first of all, the plaque. Ciswell, would you, you hold that. Yes. Nice job, vice. So this is a plaque presented to Mayor Barbara Kohler in 2015, in appreciation of your leadership to the Town of Fairfax. And the quote we chose for you is by Ralph Waldo Emerson, and it says, "Do not go where the path may lead, go instead where there is no path and leave a trail." And I think you have done that in a, in an exemplary way. I hope that I can lead in some likeness to what it is that you've taught me. I'm very grateful to have had the year, I'm so glad I nominated you last year, I sort of feel like Peter, I've had a year to listen and learn, and I really appreciate the guidance, and it's been a really nice time. So with that, I'd like to present back to you. And now for the fun stuff.
As the town manager representing staff, I thought I'd start a new tradition and give out mugs to the outgoing mayor, and so I will owe Council Member Reed and Council Member Weinsdorf a mug, but I created a Town of Fairfax... But I created a Town of Fairfax mug. We have the logo, pictures of the, what is that? Fairfax Theater, the Women's Club. But more importantly, I have a shot here of the mayor with her pet skunk. Oh, I don't know how long ago. But it's a lovely collector's item, and I just like to present that to her mayor, outgoing mayor.
I don't think people can see this, but some of you may know that I had a pet skunk. And there's a picture of me in town hall that surprise hasn't had lots of graffiti over it with my pet skunk, who I haven't had for many years. But I do want to say one thing is it's been an honor serving the residents, citizens, community of Fairfax and beyond. I have just been so honored and really so grateful that we live in a town where there's so much engagement. There's nothing like Fairfax. We're so fortunate to live here, and I'm honored to be here and serve with this council. So thank you.
So I would like to also present my mentor mayor, something which may not be, in keeping with her, that's a private joke. These are cookies, which she took a liking to last year. They're cookies, actually, that my mother, who happens to be in the audience, Yvonne Goddard, taught me to make when I was very young. And they, I hope that you enjoy them. And then most importantly, I spent the day at Victoria's Secret. So Barbara likes to tease me about my shorts. I told her they're mom shorts, but she seems to think that they're more borrowed from my 14-year-old daughter, who's also here tonight. I assure you that this will not be too revealing, but I do hope you'll enjoy it and that you'll open it right now.
Is this the tiny skirt that you wanted me to put on?
It says, "Keep Fairfax funky." And it's got a VW van on it from our very own Revolution Nine. And with that, I think we're taking a break. So enjoy.
Can I just chime in for a moment? I just wanted to thank both Barbara and Renee for a great year and give you both a little token of my personal appreciation for all you both have done and wishing you a really great year coming ahead, Renee. That's Mimi Newton, who's on our planning commission and is incredibly generous. Thank you.
Okay, everyone, welcome back. But before we move on to open time, I just wanted to actually open with a couple of thoughts and a couple of words that I wrote. And as I thought of words, I thought of, and someone shared with me, the words of Australian-born Jermaine Greer. She was one of the major voices of the second wave of the feminist movement. And she spoke, "I do, I do think that women could make politics irrelevant by a kind of spontaneous cooperative action, the like of which we have never seen, which is so far from people's ideas of state structure or viable social structure that it seems to them like total anarchy, when what it really is, is very subtle forms of interrelation that do not follow some hierarchical pattern, which is fundamentally patriarchal. The opposite of patriarchy is not matriarchy, but fraternity. Yet I think it's women who are going to have to break this spiral of power and find the trick of cooperation." In October, I had the pleasure of attending the Bioneers Conference. And Bioneers brings together the leaders and the great orators of both the environmental and the social justice movements. Over the three days, the attendees were treated to data and dharma and youth dance and drama and all the ingredients and the medicine that the activist soul needs. Some call this gathering preaching to the choir, but I call it the annual reboot and the time which we come together to fine tune the harmonies. It was profound, but not altogether surprising to me that each plenary speaker, from climate scientist to spiritualist to statesperson to biomimicry specialist, returned again and again to compassion and heart-centered decision-making as the critical foundation for effective leadership. I would like to go back and expand on the terms of my oath, not the terms of my office, and swear to listen, to learn, and to make informed policy decisions with an open heart based on inclusive, non-intimidating public process. And I want to begin from there. So with that, it's time for open time. And if anyone would like to speak in open time... And I won't do that every meeting, but just most. Open time for public expression. So there'll be a three-minute time limit for each member of the public that would like to speak. You can line up at the podium. And this is time set aside for individuals wishing to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. If you wish to address the council, please approach this podium and state your name and your address, if you're comfortable doing so. And you will have three minutes to speak. So if anyone is here for open time, please come on down.
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Polino Sapova. I don't live in Fairfax. I live in Sausalito. And I'm speaking on behalf of the group Resilient Neighborhoods. I'm currently the outreach associate, and I know that many of you are aware of our program, but I just wanted to use this opportunity to give you an update on where we're at at this point. So we've been working throughout Marin to help families take action on climate change by reducing their own greenhouse gas emissions, preparing for emergencies, and building community. Fairfax's Climate Action Committee has made it one of their priorities to support and promote our program, and the town council endorsed us two years ago. Since we started, Fairfax has had almost 100 people in 29 households complete one of our eco teams, reducing over 376,000 pounds of carbon emissions. Even though Fairfax has a smaller population compared to other jurisdictions in Marin, it is in third place in terms of number of participants. So Fairfax is awesome, as we all know. Countywide, our program has had almost 600 participants who have collectively reduced 2.6 million pounds of CO2. This year, we received support from the Marin Climate and Energy Partnership to help us expand the program and reach more people. Just briefly, for those of you that are not familiar with us, our program empowers people to take action on climate change in their own lives. In our county, 60% of the carbon emissions come from the residents, so this is, our personal action is important. Our program is free, it's fun, and it's set up like a Weight Watchers program where households go on a diet to lose 5,000 pounds of carbon. We also help people prepare for the changes that are coming by actually taking emergency preparedness actions and building community. Let's see. The program is fun and effective because we do it in a team of five or more households. And these can be friends, neighbors, coworkers, and people from church or other groups. The team meets five times with a Resilient Neighborhoods coach and chooses from a menu of over 100 actions that reduce emissions or build community resilience. People can join a team or start one of their own. Currently, we're planning an introductory event for January, and I'll, we'll be putting out more information about what the date is. However, if you're interested in getting in touch with us and starting a team, don't wait. You can reach us online at our website, which is resilientneighborhoods.org. That's all one word. Or email us at resilientneighborhoods@gmail.com. And yes, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Mayor?
Yes?
Can I just add that I believe when Resilient Neighborhoods has their event, the Climate Action Committee of Fairfax will also be working with them and participating. I'm assuming Sustainable Fairfax probably as well. But thank you, Paulina.
Paulina, just real quick, is the intro event for Fairfax for groups that might evolve in Fairfax? Or is it general introduction meeting?
It will be for Fairfax, so hopefully we'll have it in the Women's Club building. And yeah, it's specific to Fairfax.
We'll make sure people know. Thanks.
Great, thank you.
Any other open time?
Unfortunately, I own Rainbow Fabrics, and that's why I'm here. There was something that happened in the last month, well, last week, that we were aware of. PG&E has been invited, well, is in town doing some work, I guess, on 2931 Bellinas Road. And what a heck of a time to do it. This is the only time that we merchants make it during the year, hopefully. And a lot of us are barely holding on by the skin of our teeth. And to put, to allow something like that to happen is beyond, beyond any of my thoughts. We were aware of it on 11:30 when we saw the sign out there saying that there would be work being done and some of the street would be closed, 11:30 to 12:11. And I'm really upset. The mayor and town manager are, chamber president and the director got together, and this was not discussed or thought about. None of the merchants were noticed about it. And I think somebody has to value the merchants for something. And to completely ignore this, it's, I thought was very rude. And it's, I know that it was, some of it was on emails, and some of us, unfortunately, I've been off of it for about a month because of my computer problems. And I just don't think that that should happen again. To work during this time of the year, what got into everybody's mind to let that happen? Thanks for listening to me.
Thank you, Rose. And, you know, is there some comment from council?
Well, I think that there's, in conversations with this just before, maybe Garrett, you can bring it, but there's, there's some exploratory stuff that PG&E is doing, and we're trying to minimize the amount that that, any parking is lost. I think it came up as a surprise. I should let the town manager talk.
Actually, yeah. I was gonna ask, Garrett, we talked about you talking about this at the town managers' report time, but could we address it right now?
Sure.
Thanks.
So I'm not sure there's other merchants here who also want to say, say what the impacts have been.
I've heard of it in Bellinas Road.
Okay. And I know that property owner 31 Bellinas is, is here, too, because we've been talking. But maybe has some background. So yes, it's true, PG&E applied about six months ago for a permit to do electrical upgrade. We did approve it, but I will say staff didn't really realize the disruption or impact. In the past, we have approved things like that. It hasn't been nearly as disruptive, so that's on us. Moving forward in the future, obviously, we're not gonna allow such work to happen in December, because with that advance notice, we could either push it before December or after in January. Now, but when we found out that the contractor was gonna close down the parking and the concerns of all the merchants, we actually worked with PG&E and their contractor, trying to minimize the impacts on parking. So on Tuesday, it was a couple of spaces. We asked them to store all their equipment whenever possible, as well as contractors' vehicles and staging on the property of 31 Bellinas, to minimize the impacts to the downtown. And so they've done that. Right now, with the project, what it is, is PG&E is trying to figure out for the electrical upgrade where to put the vault. Unfortunately, what would happen is if they do do the vault in the street, it probably would impact a couple of spaces. Not sure about the trenching. If they're gonna do trenching or how it's gonna work, so we're still trying to figure that out. They would, they'd only work from Monday through Thursday, and so it'd be open Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. But we are trying to minimize as much impact as possible. That being said, we have spoke to PG&E, and we have spoke to the property owner, who's exploring some different options to perhaps get that work completed after the holidays without impacting the ability for him. He needs to complete his project because he has lessees who need to move into the space because they're not gonna have their current space to move into. And so it's a highly complicated process where we're trying to figure out how best to make it work. But that being said, we are apologetic, obviously, to the businesses. It was never our intent for that to happen. I agree 100% that really during the holiday period, we should have thought about that differently six months ago. It just wasn't something we thought of. But now, we have this policy that we're not gonna do it in the future. Obviously, that doesn't help you now, but we really are trying to work with PG&E and the owner and the contractor to minimize the impact as much as possible. PG&E, I'm not supposed to say this, they do have some claim forms. If you believe their work is impacting you, to see me after the meeting, and I could get you a form. But that's pretty much the town managers' report. And because it's kind of this report, it does provide some flexibility of other members of the public wanting to talk specifically on that topic. And I think you do need to hear from the property owner.
Just one question, Garrett. We learned of this very late last week, and at that time, we were told that it would be during this week only. And I'm getting the sense that that's not the case.
Originally, it was intended this week and then next week. How many days? They were intending to be completed next week. And I think that would still be the case once they figure out what they need to do.
And just one more follow-up question. You mentioned the vault, that they might put that in the street. Is there some possibility of putting that vault on 31 Bellinas? Because we really can't afford to lose parking spaces.
You wouldn't lose the parking space. It actually would be in the driveway of Mono. And the added bonus is they will repair the driveway to Mono and the sidewalk leading into Mono Alley.
Thank you.
So there'll be room to pass on Mono? Still use it as a driveway?
Ultimately, yes, because the vault will be in the ground, so you just drive over the top of metal plates.
Very good. I guess I'm bringing this to attention, that I hope that this does not happen again. And some protocol can be set in place so that this doesn't, it's just unbelievable. Thank you for listening to me.
Okay. Thanks, Rose. Michael?
In great respect for Rose and everybody else, if the town would like to stage some of this on my property, to open up those parking spaces, providing that it's not like petroleum-based fuel that'll leak into the ground, very happy to extend that for you, just like the Greek. I didn't charge you. So if this helps our merchants, just, I want a period of time from start and finish, and we're welcome to do this.
Thank you very much. And Brad?
Hi, council. I'm Brad Schwan. I own the property 31 and 21 Bellinas. It's an unfortunate situation that's come about, and it is, as Garrett said, it is a lot more complicated than just trying to get the work done right in the middle of December. Three of the four tenants that'll be moving into my space have either been evicted from where they are currently or their leases are up. Anyway, they all have to move. And so I've been working 60... And, uh, so I've been working 60-plus hours a week trying to get the, the project done in time, so that by the end of the year, they, they can, uh, move in. I'd have to say, a lot of this falls, the, what's happened is really falling on PG&E. I've been pushing on them for eight months to get, to do this work, and it's just a really slow grind to get all the paperwork in order, and I don't know why it takes them so long, but it's taken them this long to, to get to this place. That being said, they are trying, you know, when they first came here, I don't think they realized that the parking was such a big deal, even though we had a conversation around it. I think they're used to coming into a place and spreading out and taking all the room they need to get their work done. They're very aware now of the situation and, and realize that it is having a big impact and are going to, I've utilized my parking area and, and Mono as a staging area in the future. So, drastically reduce the amount of parking that, that is gonna be lost during the construction. That being said, we are, we're looking at another alternative. Uh, don't know if it's gonna be feasible or not, but I do have power to the property, and we're gonna try to maybe reroute that power to the new, uh, electrical system. It's two separate kinds of systems. I don't know if we'll be able to do it or not, and we're looking in the scene if the parts are available to actually make it happen. But that's a, that's a possibility, so that we can get open and then do the work maybe in January. So, we're, we're trying.
Free publicity. Who's moving in?
I'm sorry?
Free publicity. Who's moving in?
Uh, let's see, Fairfax is moving in, um, Four Paws is moving in, um, there's gonna be a gym with a, a guy who's a, uh, Olympic weightlifter. Uh, he's a, he's, he trains Olympic athletes. Uh, he's moving in, and Yoga Mountain is moving in. Yeah, so, thank you.
And there is a lot of excitement on the street about, uh, their new locations.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be a really-
Thanks for, for coming in, and you're, you know, expressing the desire to make this smoother for everybody.
Yeah, we're trying. We're trying.
Great, thanks.
And I really, I, I apologize to the, to local merchants. I, I realize it is an inconvenience for them. Yeah, thank you.
Mayor, I mean, I, I mean, I don't wanna point fingers and, you know, directly at PG&E or whatever like that, but frankly, I, I think this is a situation that they probably run into in a lot of towns, and we had the same, a similar situation where they wanted to tear up our sidewalk on Broadway a few years back, right during the holiday season, and, you know, we told them, no, you can't. But, uh, it, it's probably, you know, that, they, they need to be working somewhere, so they may have picked Fairfax, and they need to learn not to pick Fairfax, you know, and just having this policy in place that's pretty clear with them, I think, is a good way going forward, so.
Garrett, for clarification, when you say the policy, are you talking about no work in December? Or where, where are we going with that?
Right. So, what we would do is typically, as Councilmember Reed mentioned, when PG&E is doing the work themselves for their purposes, they have more flexibility, so it's true, last time, I think it was last year or two years ago, we said, don't do any work during the holidays. And so they didn't, they did it in January or February. Uh, what we're talking about is that work, but in addition, we're talking about the work where we know ahead of time they're doing work for a private business, and our goal is not to have them do that work during the holidays if it's gonna impact, you know, the area. There's gonna be exceptions, 'cause there's gonna be emergencies, you know, maybe it's just one space, I don't know. But our goal is not to have that done, 'cause with advance planning, they should be able to schedule it either before or after. In Mr. Swan's case, PG&E, if they had to reschedule, they wouldn't come back till late Jan, January. And it's PG&E contractors, so they schedule them well in advance for different projects and try to account for weather.
I, I have another problem with, with, for the businesses downtown. There's variances that are being allowed that are not conducive to the retail of downtown Fairfax. And I just wonder if there's anybody on the council, or somehow, we can get something going, so that we do not have businesses that are not retail taking up the space for retail. I don't know if anybody wants to work on that. I certainly would appreciate it, and some of the others.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that that would be a discussion, if you wanna present something or put something in writing and send it to, to Garrett, and see how we would proceed with that.
Or what we can do is, you can discuss that as part of your discussion from CH to CC, 'cause we're gonna have to modify the language in CC zone anyway, which currently allows the uses you see now.
Okay, so that's coming, Rose. Okay, so, moving on to, mm, excuse me, to number six on the agenda, which is reports. Um, and we have the annual report regarding the Marin-Sonoma mosquito and vector control district. Our representative is Frank Egger, and he is here, uh, to present to us.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members. That was one of the nicest presentations I've seen for one of our old timers who passed on in my years in Fairfax, and I wanna thank the council for, for doing that, for the Vacaro family and for Lou. Also today, I attended a funeral mass at St. Rita's for Tony, Tony Raffo, another old-timer who passed away this past Sunday. So, it's been a kind of a rough, a rough, uh, fall for, for some of our old timers. Anyway, I'm just here to report, I gave you two in writing, and I won't take up a lot of your time. Probably three key issues this year. One, we had, we had a, a tax measure on the ballot. It was a Prop 218 measure in order to raise additional funds for the district. And, um, one of the things we had done for, for, for a number of years is, we were paying down our unfunded pension liability with M.SARA to the tune of about a half a million dollars a year, and then we weren't able to do it the past couple of years, and, and this tax measure would've allowed some, some additional buydown on the unfunded liability. What was interesting is the tax measure, um, there were a couple of us that said, boy, this is kinda flawed, and we should be going a different direction. But the board listened to the, to the consultants and put the tax measure on, and with no opposition at all, the measure didn't pass. I mean, there was no organized opposition. No one was going out raising a banner, saying, oh, no, vote no. It, it didn't pass. So, the district had to kinda regroup, and, um, we're getting through this year just fine. We're using some reserves. Uh, we've cut some expenses, and, um, you know, that's what happens when things get tight. I know what it's like with a tight budget here in Fairfax all those years. Sometimes you scrimp and save, and you try to get by, and you know, you, you work around, around, to, to, to keep your agency going, and that's what we're doing at the mosquito district. Another issue is, is, um, uh, the, the requirement that all the mosquito districts have a, an environmental impact report for their continued, uh, use of, of certain pesticides. And, uh, all the districts of the state are doing that, and Marin is part of a, of a group of nine mosquito districts preparing a, a programmatic environmental impact report. It was released, uh, we, we held three, three hearings, one in Santa Fel, one in Petaluma, and one in Santa Rosa, uh, and to take comments. And one person showed up in, in Santa Fel and Santa Rosa, and no one showed up in Petaluma to comment. But there were some written comments by different environmental groups from both Sonoma County and Marin. So, the district will be, will be, will be looking at that programmatic environmental impact report to determine its sufficiency. So, that's coming up early next year. The third issue that we're dealing with right now is the West Marin mosquito council and the Marin-Sonoma mosquito vector control district agreement, which has been in effect since about 2008, 2007, 2000, 2007 or so, uh, is expiring. And the West Marin folks are concerned, because, uh, uh, one of the issues is, is methoprine and the use of methoprine out in West Marin, um, in, in septic tanks. And, um, they, they'd rather not have methoprine used out there. And so the agreement we've had with them is, we'd use least toxic pesticides in West Marin, uh, and we seek to find OMRI-approved pesticides. And, um, we're on a threshold of, of, of reaching that, of getting that, those. And, and I'd like to see the agreement extended, um, and I think the district's a little split on that. So, um, that's an issue also that we'll be facing in the first of the year, whether or not the, the agreement should be extended to, to continue the ban on methoprine. Other than that, you know, we, we're doing what we usually do, um, go after mosquitoes. And, uh, what we're having, what's interesting is, is with the, um, with the wetlands that being restored, uh, it's kind of a double-edged sword from us. It's, it's taken out some, uh, some of the wetlands that we have to get in and, and provide some control to, um, and so it's gonna free up a little time. And then, on the flip side, it's putting a lot more waterway, a lot more water in certain areas where we, where we haven't had to deal with, uh, mosquitoes before. So, um, we'll see how this is gonna all play out. They, you know, have completed Hamilton, and they just did the one off of Highway 37, so that'll be a, a test for our ability to, to deal with the restored wetlands. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, I guess, um, yeah, I, I saw, you also submitted a written report this afternoon by email.
Oh, you know, that's, that's something different.
That, okay, well-
Maybe, maybe I should mention that.
Well, I, I just, I, I just wanna say kudos to you guys for finding organic methodology to do that. But in relation to your number, subject number two here with the, um, the PEIR, um, I, I was kinda taken aback that the, the PEIR really parrots back the, the thing around glyphosate pretty much from the 80s or 90s in terms of the health problems. I mean, there's no mention in the World Health Report, uh, you know, that glyphosate was definitely found to be carcinogenic and, and suspected in a lot of different ways. Yet another language is picked up. I mean, would it help? Uh, I mean, I know your personal stance on, on, on things like that. Would it help if this council put together a letter in, in support of making, uh, policy changes at the mosquito district that reflect the new, uh, health issues?
So, where we are in the process, uh, I should've probably had you do that before the deadline for, for com, for comments, but where we are in the process is, uh, comments have been made, both written and, and just one person verbal comments. And the board hasn't taken it up yet, but, but, but just on the face of it, you, you can see some of the issues that, that, that need to be addressed a little more thoroughly in the, in the PEIR, and that would be one of them. So, um, at, at, at the next board meeting, if, if, if I'm there, um, I'll, I'll, um, I'll bring that up. We, we should have a report as to just where we stand with the, with the PEIR. It really hasn't been before the board, as a board, we haven't made any decisions on it yet. So, it'll be coming to us for sufficiency. So, whoever is your, is your mosquito rep next year will be making that decision. But it seems like, you know, if a community's concerned, they oughta let us know.
Yeah, I mean, it, it seemed like it was kinda under the radar. If you had such little public involvement or public comment, um, you know, that's indicative. Something's broken around there.
Well, we, we've heard from like, uh, Russian Riverkeeper, and, um, and, and a coast watch group, that people are concerned about fisheries, et cetera. So, um, and a number of environmental groups in Marin have commented, uh, commented. So, you know, it's, uh, it's, it's something that we're gonna be, that we're gonna have to deal with, you know. But what you were mentioning a little earlier, what's interesting, you know, in, in 2007, Santa Cruz and Monterey Counties were sprayed for light brown apple moth, aerial, aerial sprayed. And so, um, out of that came, the, the, the California Department of Food and Ag decided they go up to the San Francisco Bay Area and do the same thing. And when they announced their coming to the, to Marin, a few of us, uh, and the, the movement started right here in Fairfax, Larry Bragman, myself, and a few others, we said, wait a minute, we, we, we don't, we don't think aerial spraying is appropriate for, for Marin County at all. And we started a movement, and that led to a couple lawsuits and some losses in the courts. And today, the Third District Court of Appeals ruled in favor of, of, of Larry Bragman and myself, and, 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 and some elected officials in Santa Cruz, and, uh, and a number of individuals from Marin County that were involved as plaintiffs in a lawsuit. A huge, huge decision up there, the Third District Court of Appeal. And, uh, if anyone would like to see it, I'll, I'll, I'll email you the, the decision. It's, it's quite interesting. Uh, the appellate court upheld, uh, the, the appeal and, uh, throughout the, the programmatic environmental impact report and, uh, and, and ended the, ended the Lban program. So, um, it's huge for, 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 for folks who are concerned about pesticides and spraying in California.
Okay, thanks so much, Frank. I, I actually, oh, sorry, Peter, go for it.
Yeah, congratulations, Frank. That's, that's a, should be a really landmark decision. Um, I was curious, you know, the impacts of global warming, every time you look at a newspaper, you know, there's some new development. It's here, it's happening. Um, and I'm just wondering if the district is looking at the effects of, you know, climate change and how that may change the environment, either better or for worse, as far as vectors for mosquitoes and other, um, other pests, and also sea level rise? And if, um, if the mosquito district is, you know, planning or, or trying to look into how that would affect, uh, the, the job of the district?
The programmatic EIR is about a thousand pages, and I've, I've, I've read a lot of it, and I haven't seen those issues addressed, but they may well be addressed in, in, in the programmatic EIR. But absolutely, that, that's the business we're in, and that's how we're, we're gonna be impacted by everything you've mentioned, and we've got, we've gotta be prepared for it. Um, you know, I'll, I'll, I keep reading, you know, at nighttime, I'll, I'll read a few segments of the PEIR, and, uh, I haven't run across those issues yet, addressed, being, those issues being addressed yet.
I, it, that might be something, you know, I would just suggest that, that the district really take a look at, because, uh, the environment is just gonna be changing so quickly in the next, you know, the, the horizon keeps shrinking from a century to half a century. We might be looking at-
Oh, sure.
-big changes within five, 10 years, so.
We see it right in the winery business, what's happening.
Sure.
It's not the drought that's affecting, it's the climate change.
Okay, Frank, thank you so much. Much appreciated. Okay. So, we're moving forward to the consent calendar. Any council comments, requests?
I'd just like to make a couple comments, two items, but they don't need to be pulled.
Okay, what numbers?
Um, number seven and, I mean, I'm sorry, number 11 and number 13, and just very brief comments.
Okay, does anyone else have anything they wanna look at?
Yeah, a couple of things in the minutes.
Okay, let's go ahead with, Peter? Are you good with consent?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay, um, so Barbara, go ahead.
Okay, so regarding item 11, which is reappointment of Helen Faust to the Fairfax Volunteer Board, I just wanna say that Helen has been tireless in her commitment to the town of Fairfax. She has worked on many committees. I worked with her on the Open Space Committee. She's been very diligently working on the volunteer board. She's been working with John and I on the pedestrian trails projects, and I want, I don't wanna claim credit, because John's really been leading that, but I've been helping a little bit with Garrett. So, I just wanna say that we're very fortunate to have Helen as one of our volunteers in the town, so I wholeheartedly applaud her stepping up again and thank her for her commitment to our town. And then regarding item 13, so, item 13 is to authorize the town manager to work with Marin Clean Energy to implement an incentive program for Fairfax residents to switch to Marin Clean Energy Deep Green, which is 100% renewable energy, with refunds received from the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. And some of you may recall, back in August, I asked the council to authorize me to send a letter to the Bay Area Air Quality Management District requesting that they fund a pilot program for Fairfax to allow us to offset the costs of people signing up for Deep Green, which is $5 more a month, for one year, for 100 households. So, what that amount adds to is 100 households, $5 a month, times 12 months is $6,000. I crafted a letter to the air district, also reminding them they're in the midst of their Clean Air Plan, so this is a pilot that they could potentially scale up for a measure for the Clean Air Plan. And I had given up, and a couple of weeks ago, our town clerk let me know that a check had come in for $6,000. So, um, that's great news, and our town staff are working with Marin Clean Energy to implement this. And the Climate Action Committee, which I'm honored to sit on, has been working to get- people signed up to Deep Green. Since we started back in February, we got about 30 new Deep Green signees. But with this, we can, basically, it's free for a year. So we plan, and we're hoping, working with M.C.E., they're telling us early January, this will be in place. So the Climate Action Committee, a couple of us are meeting with M.C.E. on Friday to brainstorm how we can do more public outreach to just get this up and running as soon as it's available. So it'll be great news. And really, what it gets us in Fairfax is even lower greenhouse gas emissions. And the bottom line is, we looked at all of the measures in our climate action plan and this is the biggest greenhouse gas emissions reductions for the buck. So I'm so happy and thrilled and we just can't wait to get it in place. And I want to thank Michelle and Garrett. Michelle in particular has been working really hard to get this in place. So thank you.
Congratulations. Thanks for all the work. Okay, is there a public comment on the consent calendar?
John, want to say something?
Oh. Sorry.
Go before or after the public comment?
No, you go first.
Yeah. Okay, I better. I was listening to the eloquent speech. You know, and I should probably also mention, shout out to Helen Faust, who is dedicated, along with a number of other people, really dedicated to making Fairfax a lot safer in terms of fire protection, letting people know where these trails are that go up and straight up and down the hills around, all throughout Fairfax, which really make it possible, instead of winding down a street, which is really a death trap if you're trying to drive out in terms of if there's a wildfire, you can walk to the middle of town in four blocks. I mean, yeah, it's steep. There needs to be steps on a lot of them. And it's a project that is ongoing and you'll hear more about it over the next year. But Helen's very active on that and dedicated to that, as are a number of other people. And so it's great that she's stepping back up to the volunteer board, which has another slot available, I believe, too.
Two.
Two, yeah. In terms of the minutes, there was a, I guess this was on a public hearing that I recused for. I just wanted to correct the spelling of True Heights's name. It's True as in true or false and Heights is H.E.I.T.Z. instead of H.I.T.E.S. That's on page three of the minutes. And in relation to a subject that I did talk on, and I checked with Mr. Michael McIntosh before he, it says he supported this ordinance. It's for the low flow toilet things that we were talking about last month. This is on page four of the minutes, about three quarters of the way down. It says, "Michael McIntosh supported the ordinance." And actually, he said he put in about 30 low flow toilets, paid to have them put in and watched his water use go way up. And then he had them pulled out and a different higher flow toilet put in, so, and his water use went down. And he said that he supported the essence of saving water and the aims of the ordinance in that way. But, you know, this modern low flow toilets that, you know, he put in resulted in three flushes per load, if you want to put it that way. So that's an increase in water use. And that's actually why I voted no against this, too, is because it needs to be, you know, dialed in and, you know, frankly, things like landscaping use a lot more water. We'll get to that. I know, I guess this item is continued until next month. But this is in reference to the minutes where we did the first reading last month. And so I wanted to point that out also, just because, just reading the minutes, it didn't really bring any of that out. So that's it.
Okay. Open time, public comment on the consent, if there is any. Seeing none?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Oh, excellent.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
With the changes in the...
With the changes to the minutes. Okay. So we are going to start in with our regular agenda. Oh, no, we're not. We're going to go to council reports and comments.
Will we start?
Start, David.
Okay. As has become my practice, and I think as the months roll on here, it's important for me to focus the community's attention on the flood zone and flooding issue. And I received an email from, I think, a very well intentioned group called Save Lefty Gomez. And they raised a number of really good points that required a response. And I sent them a long email and I'm certainly not going to read it here, but let me try to hit the high points because I'm sure there are many people out in that neighborhood and others who are focusing on the detention basin that's being proposed for Lefty Gomez. I think the major thing that we all have to sit back and take a moment about is that the flooding issue is not magically going to go away. And although it was now, gee, 10 years ago, we faced a great tragedy and almost losing the life of a firefighter who was out in floodwaters, saving a citizen in San Anselmo. So many of our neighbors here across the valley had their houses inundated by the floodwaters. Our downtown business community and our town government itself actually had to move from the flooded town hall into a number of trailers that lasted for months. I might even say, although the manager could correct me, I think we're, even at this date, we haven't fully recovered all of the funds from FEMA. There are still hundreds of thousands of dollars of outstanding fees that we will probably never recover. So the town, which scrapes to get by and provide essential services, faced the daunting challenge of doing so with less of your generous tax dollars. You know, the thing that I think we all have to look at when we think about these detention basins, and I know the good people in San Anselmo face that prospect and we now face it, but not on town land, but on the school district land of Lefty Gomez Field, is that there are no other alternatives. If there were, I could tell you that the Flood Zone 9 Advisory Board, having spent many hundreds of thousands of dollars, over a million dollars of study, would have come up with those solutions. And yes, we have cleaned the creeks to a good degree. We are removing the old bridges which have abutments that crease into the, crease the flow. But at the end of the day, those are what we often refer to as the low hanging fruit that is expensive, but within reason. If you want to stop the flooding, unfortunately, the science, the engineers, it's going to have to be through these detention basins. Let me get to some of the points very quickly that they raised. I think if you're living out there, you know, near Lefty Gomez and White Hill Middle School, you're gonna have a detention basin that's going to take away the use of that field for a little bit of time. And the question is, how much time? The email and the concern in the community is that it might be a significant, significant period of time. And we have not examined that, but it certainly would be more than a year. I would like to see it within the two-year timeframe. But we have not looked at it. We have not come to a conclusion on that, nor have we come to a conclusion on what that detention basin would look like. Many people are concerned that perhaps the berms would be too high, the berms would be made from concrete and the like. Again, it hasn't been examined, it hasn't been studied. What has been promised is that, and I think anybody who's been out on Lefty Gomez Fields would probably like to see a better field, the drainage on it is not very good. We would be leaving the field in much better condition as a detention basin than it is now as a field. And there would be other amenities that would be added. People say, well, it'll get used all the time and will be, you know, degraded. Well, actually not. If Lefty Gomez had been put into place in, let's call it, 1980, it would have been used twice in the last 35 years or so. The Great Flood, I think it was '82, and the Flood of '05 would have been the two opportunities where we would have used the detention basins to hold the floodwaters. People, I think, are rightly concerned, well, what happens after you put the floodwaters in there and then you drain them out a couple of hours later? The field would obviously be impaired. And yes, absolutely, funding will be set aside and dedicated to ensuring that the field, again, is put back in the condition that it should be as a playground. And finally, there was a concern about environmental protection, that we have creeks and streams and that if you begin to manipulate the stream and shunt the waters off into the detention basin from the creek, that this will have environmental impacts. And again, standing back from it a little bit, nothing gets done, and I practice environmental law, for the good guys. And I can tell you that the entire project and the role of impacting creeks would, of course, not be moving forward without full and complete sequel review, as well as having reviewed by a whole alphabet soup of state and federal agencies. So very quickly, it's important to notice that it's not as if you could say Lefty Gomez Field. Why don't we take that one out? We'll use the one, maybe we can get that Sunnyside one. You have to look at all of the detention basins at the top of the watershed and they all have to be put into play to hold back the floodwaters from flooding Fairfax and some of the other communities downstream. It's absolutely critical. There's going to be much more discussion on this. I very much hope that the community will show up at the next Flood Zone 9 Advisory Board meeting. It's coming on December 15th, week from Tuesday, I believe, at San Anselmo Town Hall, starting at around 7:00. The meeting's run for an hour and a half to two hours. Absolutely critical. And if you can't make that, please follow everything on the website, MarinWatersheds.org. A wealth of information there. Thanks to the council for giving me a few extra minutes. Other than that, I would say it's a delight to spend time with you this evening, particularly on the 26th anniversary of the first date that I had with Heidi.
Well, congratulations on that first date anniversary.
I hope she appreciates it as much as she does.
So many husbands don't remember anniversaries. You remember the anniversary of the first date.
It's, thank you.
You're exemplary. Okay, so I attended the Chamber of Commerce monthly meeting and I'll be passing that mantle on to our new mayor. We meet with the chamber monthly and I think that's a very productive meeting where we really talk about what's coming up. Have we known about this Bellinas Road thing? We could have talked a little bit more about that at that time. I also attended the Special Planning Commission meeting on the senior housing project out near where I live and the Fairfax Market proposed projects. And I was at home ill, so I got to watch it on TV for about three hours. And I must say, it's a great way to participate in a meeting. So for those of you who don't have time to come down, we have many people watching on TV. I also attended, we had a workshop, it wasn't town sponsored, but a number of us were here, a medical marijuana workshop at the women's club here. And I know some of those folks are here to talk about our next item. I also had an interview with the San Francisco Seminary in San Anselmo. They're looking at really changing what they're doing and perhaps I suggested embracing other religions other than Presbyterian. I also suggested embracing gay, lesbian, transgender communities, which is not something the Presbyterian Church is always known for. And they're really looking at broadening their horizons and doing things like leadership and really broadening their outreach with the community and really looking at other religions, other groups. So I think, stay tuned for that. I don't know how many of you know the seminary, but it's a beautiful piece of property in San Anselmo. And I also attended the Marin County Council of Mayors and Council Members Meeting in Larkspur, where the One TAM group gave a talk. And this is three agencies that work together on various parks and open space. Also attended the Marin Clean Energy meeting. I'm a board member and some of what we talked about was the PCIA charge, which came up tonight. So with that, I'll turn it over.
Well, I guess I also attended some of these meetings that you were talking about, the MCCMC, for instance, as well as the medical marijuana workshop that was in this room a couple of Saturdays ago. And I also watched the Planning Commission meeting online, which is, yeah, you're right, it's nice to sit at home, especially if you're, you spend too much time in this room. But it's hard to make your comments known, but that's fine. We're the appellate body for anything that happens there anyway. So, but yeah, that's, you know, about the senior housing going down where the Lutheran Church property is and then another proposal over next to the IGA market. I also attended a fire board meeting. It was our regular fire board meeting last about three weeks ago. And it looks like we are in the process of offering the current fire chief extension to his contract. But that's probably January, something like that, where that'll come to fruition. And I attended with our mayor here, two different B-PAC meetings, which is the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, which is basically mostly working around pedestrian issues. Every five years, this plan gets updated and we've got a lot of, you know, our bike lines, Safe Routes to School, infrastructure has been created. It starts out at this B-PAC meeting, among other places, but it's really nice to have a list of what the town would like to see down the road in terms of making a plan. And a lot of pedestrian improvements are what we're looking at, particularly downtown, and kind of looking at how those dovetail on different things that might change downtown. And that has resulted in a report that's going to a set of consultants that have done most of the bicycle pedestrian plans. It's certainly done ours in the county, and that's Alta Consulting. And we're working pretty closely with Alex there at Alta Consulting to pretty much get something that will get Fairfax residents things that they need in terms of bicycle pedestrian infrastructure around town. And that's my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Relatively slow month for me. I also attended the Marin County Council of City Councilmen and Mayors meeting and was very interesting presentation on One TAM, which is sort of a, over, an organization that's looking to integrate different aspects of the manager of Mount Tam, the watershed lands. I also attended in person the Planning Commission Workshop on the Lutheran Church Senior Housing Project and also proposed mixed use project near the, in the parking lot of the Fairfax Market. And it was very informative, a really good kind of overview of, conceptually, of what those two projects will look like. Two very important projects. And I would encourage everyone to, as these projects are going forward and being considered, especially at the Planning Commission level, to come forward, learn about them. And if you have concerns, it's better to try to have input early and, you know, address any concerns that folks may have. But I thought it was a well presented and I thought our planning staff did a really good job of giving us an overview of that. And that's my report for this month.
So I attended in person every and all of those workshops that you guys mentioned. And I actually wanted to start with just a thank you out to Zero Waste Marin. Zero Waste Marin and Marin Sanitary Services and White Hill Middle School, which is the Ross Valley School District, are working together to create a complete overhaul and recycling system, composting system for White Hill Middle School, where 800 kids attend and throw their lunches away in the landfill bin every day. This is going to be paid for by the county, by your dollars, by Zero Waste Marin. Thank you all for that. And it should represent a massive diversion of waste that should be going to the proper places and not into the landfill. I attended a very exciting opening of the Memorial Park in San Anselmo Skateboard and Basketball Court, to which we donated a very small amount of money, but every bit counts. And I attended with Chief Morin, our police chief, and Sergeant Tabaranza. We were very well represented as a town. The skateboard park is fabulous. If you haven't seen the Memorial Park Skateboard Park and what it's doing for the kids, it's transformational. There is a place for them to be. Cleared out all the bushes, got rid of the drugs, and you got kids mentoring kids and having a really good, very cool place to be. So thanks to the council for agreeing to do that. Also took a couple of young youth... Also took a couple of young youth interns to the Time to Lead on Climate event at Dominican University, where there were 800 members of the public, 40 organizations, community organizations, and some fantastic speakers. I wished at the time we could have locked the doors and come up with some real solutions before we let anybody go. But I do think that one hopeful thing is that we've got a lot of young people getting very fired up right on the opening days to the Paris Climate Talks. We got a lot of very, as I said, fired-up Marin folks to come out. They also came out to the hub in a climate rally last Sunday. 350.org put together a wonderful event and brought a lot of young people out. Marin School of Environmental Leadership, these young folks are stepping up, and it's very hopeful. We keep providing opportunities, and they will come. Not to take any more time, working with the Community Outreach Subcommittee for the Disaster Preparedness Council to work toward getting people as informed as possible of preparing for disasters, where to register, how do you get informed? We'll have some, we'll have something we're hoping to call a Prepare Fair, to bring people in in the spring, and let people know what services are available, and work toward expanding our services. So, thanks. Do we?
Yeah, we do.
A public comment on consent?
Absolutely. Actually, I have a meeting that I also attended in April for the Flood District 9, and is a meeting that I thought would certainly hurt this town, so I'll bring this up. At that meeting, CSW had submitted, as David knows, to, through eminent domain, possibly look at taking Marin Town and Country Club to hold 250 acre-feet of water. What that would mean, besides blowing their budget, so it'd probably be $50 million to get to that place of taking my property, afterwards it'd probably take 10 years through litigation to evict all my tenants and then try to rehouse them, probably another, maybe $10 or $15 million in addition. And then after tearing down all the buildings, cutting down all the trees, excavating my property down 17.2 feet to the creek level to hold that water. In doing so to hold that much water, they would then have to build a concrete wall along the creek of 12.5 feet, as well as reinforce the hill behind it. The biggest concern to this-
Michael, this really isn't an appropriate time. So, a public comment after Councilmember reports isn't, why don't you, if you want to give us a brief report of what happened, please come back and do it in open time next time, since it's not on the agenda.
Well, no, it's not the agenda. Just coming from a meeting, because I also went to this meeting, I think it's appropriate, because it'd hurt our town. I'm at the 500-year floodplain, and the excavation alone, there'd never be a sequel permit, but the excavation alone for that many thousands of truckloads would shut down all traffic for years. And this is just a very poor expense for our engineers.
Okay.
But they're not doing it, Michael.
Well, I know, but still-
The whole idea, Michael, was you're telling us about something that the Flood District considered for a nanosecond and then killed it.
Okay. So, guys, this isn't the time to do an argument back and forth about it. If you would like to inform the public of something, which would be important for us to know, please bring it back when it's an appropriate time to share it.
We do not want to scar our town. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Michael. So, Town Manager Report.
Sure. A couple of things. Actually, the former mayor, Kohler, suggested I bring up a couple of status items for the council. So, you may recall, back in October, the council approved the concept of replacing our streetlights with LEDs. At that time, staff reported we'd work with PG&E on the Turnkey Program and work out the details. Well, we're still working out the details. Hopefully, we plan to come back to you in January, hopefully with the agreement to participate in the program. But that's an update on LED lights. The other is, in October, you may recall, you also discussed the concept of financing for capital improvements. Within that, actually, what we're planning to do now is actually report back to you in the spring of next year on your options. That's directly related to, because the Finance Director actually reminded me, that next year, the town actually can refinance its bonds in August 2016. Typically, you start the process more in spring. At that time, we'll know interest rates and the ability of pulling out money to finance capital improvements. At that time, when you consider that, we can also consider the different financing programs. And at that time, we also will have cost estimates for Canyon Road, which was one of the projects we talked about as a possibility for funding. And then, another item is holiday lights. So, staff is continuing or plans to add a few more lights, and then the lights will be on by this Saturday. And then, for the Women's Club, our game plan, don't hold me to it, is that by your next meeting in January, we hope to have the stage accessible and available for activities. So, this will all be removed, we'll have the lift-in, hopefully. You'll have a different backdrop, modular furniture, that then can be stored for activities. And so, that is the game plan for the Women's Club. It'll definitely be started, whether or not it's completed or not, we'll see. And then, lastly, I'd really like to thank the council for approving my contract amendment. I actually look forward to working with you over the next few years to complete and help you complete your different priorities and projects. So, with that, that concludes the Manager's Report.
Just a question. I think, Garrett, you had mentioned that when you talked about your contract, you were going to talk about a commitment to stay on three and a half to four years.
Yeah, that's what I meant, for the few years. I think I can commit to trying to get your projects done, that three-year, whatever that is. I guess a few years is three to four years.
I think we talked about about three and a half to four years.
Right. That'd be correct.
Okay. And then, just one more quick thing. I think one of the things that we should celebrate is our bike racks have now been installed through town, that you had gotten grant money from Bay Area Air Quality Management Districts. So, I think that's completed. Is that correct?
Well, I initially said that to you. Turns out, we found some more racks. So, we will be completed, hopefully, by the end of this week.
That would be great. And even though I'm no longer mayor, I'd like a personal note when that's completed. Thank you.
Hey, Garrett, just one thing on bonds. It seems to me that when we refinanced, the last time was in the teeth of the Great Recession. I don't know, finance for finance, but how could the financial benefit accrue to us from refinancing when things have gotten better?
So, these are bonds from 2006. And so, when you go through the refinancing, there's interest rates, there's different aspects of it. Actually, if the Finance Director was here, he could really explain it to you. But the possibility exists that you can, given the interest rates and given some of the other things going on in terms of what we've paid down in the bonds, that you may be able to actually pull money out for the same payment. And that's what we take a look at. Possibly exists that maybe you can't do that, maybe you decide not to do that, decide to go a different route. But that's really what will be for, one of the options for you to consider in the spring.
And we did that some years ago, rather successfully.
Yes, you can do it every 10 years. So, you had bonds from 2002, 2006, and I think you have 2008. So, you did it in 2012. You're going to take a look at 16, and you can consider it again in 2018. So, you have three series of bonds.
So, what we're going to do is take just a three-minute break, and then we will come back and proceed with item number 14 on the agenda. So. So, now we're moving on to the regular agenda, and we'll begin with number 14, which is a discussion and consideration of local regulations regarding cultivation of medical marijuana. And Garrett, would you like to do the staff report, please?
Sure. Maybe as some background, you may recall, just last November, we actually discussed, the council at that time discussed the impact of three new state bills, AB 243, AB 266, and SB 643. With regard to AB 243, staff indicated that that item regarding medical marijuana cultivation program of the state had actually set a deadline to March 1st for municipalities to actually adopt regulations. And so, at that time, at that time, with staff, the council indicated to staff that, yes, we'd like to maintain local control. So, we also reported that the best way to achieve that would be this two-pronged approach. One is, we would do the regular adoption process for ordinances, which means that the Planning Commission would consider an ordinance in December, and then the first reading would happen in January for council consideration, with the second reading in February. However, if the state does not amend its March 1st deadline, then we indicated that the council may be required to adopt their urgency ordinance along with the regular ordinance in March. So, oh, I'm sorry, in February. Apologize. And also at your November meeting, we also indicated that the council would have this evening to also talk about the issues a little bit more, to provide a little more direction to the Planning Commission. And what we attached to the staff report, we actually attached a table, which kind of shows the position of all the local agencies regarding cultivation. In essence, in Marin County, no one has any regulations at this time regarding cultivation. We made a copy of AB 243, and we provided the Heelsburg ordinance as a good template for maybe the council to consider, and we gave a section of the Sebastopol ordinance governing cultivation for personal medical use. Now, to facilitate perhaps discussion this evening, we're really asking the council maybe focus on two policy issues and then the subsets. One is, allow for personal cultivation. And it seemed from your discussion in November that that was something that the council was supportive of, that there should be some level of personal cultivation allowed in town. In terms of consideration, you can establish some type of plant limit for indoor and outdoor. For outdoor, you could maybe set up a square footage as opposed to a plant limitation. From enforcement perspective, you probably need to know an actual precise number. It's easier to provide certainty than it is to measure square footage. If you would like, you could consider exemptions and licensing permitting regulations for qualified patients who perhaps exceed the limits that you establish. And then, there's the environmental concerns, obviously, water, energy, public safety, location of the property. And you should know that fire is also developing guidelines that it's planning to share with all the municipalities, just so you would understand their concerns as it relates to cultivation of medical marijuana. The second item, it's something that the council didn't necessarily discuss last November, or just this past month, is allow or prohibit commercial cultivation. While you didn't specifically discuss it, you seemed to focus more on personal cultivation for qualified patients and establishing some type of limit. But, that being said, if you wanted to consider commercial cultivation, then you'd either need to adopt some type of regulations or licensing process to maintain local control, or you could just ban it and then consider changes in the future, if that's something you want to consider. Now, or you could broaden it, talk about land use designations, where it'd be allowed, how large, again, public safety, environmental-type issues. Now, the staff recommendation is, since we're moving at an accelerated pace and don't have a lot of time to talk about the issues, we're talking about maybe a more measured approach. From a staff perspective, I think we would say, if we're going to have personal cultivation for medical purposes, we'd like to limit it to some type of finite number of plants, both for indoor and outdoor, and perhaps even a certain number limit per parcel. From our perspective, that's much easier to enforce. It reduces a little of the gray area, makes things easier. In terms of commercial cultivation, we're recommending that we just ban that outright, public safety concerns, environmental concerns, administration enforcement concerns. Now, that being said, just because you ban it doesn't mean you can't go back and modify it in the future. And part of our recommendation is that it allows the council maybe to take a little more time. You could have the Planning Commission discuss it. And more importantly, you can actually maybe then see the results of what you came up with, and then modify in the future if you believe there was some unforeseen circumstances or events that you really didn't address with your initial take. So, with that, again, what we're recommending is, to the extent you can, provide some parameters for the Planning Commission. To the extent there are some areas you'd rather just defer to the Planning Commission, that's fine. Like, for example, they could address the issue of the fire department's recommendations regarding cultivation, at least outdoors, if that's what you deem is appropriate. They could talk about screening and those type of things. It's probably something that would fit well for the Planning Commission. And then, lastly, just one note. What happens is, when you adopt an ordinance, what it would be is, it actually would be a ban, and it would have exemptions. It would have exemptions for personal cultivation for medical uses, including the plants, as well as any other exemptions or requirements that you would allow, like to put in there to address issues that perhaps you want to provide exemptions for people that have certain existing conditions, or allow for certain conditions. So, with that, that pretty much is the staff report, available for any questions.
So, questions from council. David?
It's an odd time to be forced into making these decisions, because probably in 11 months, the landscape is going to change, and fair likelihood that by the ballot, we will be joining Washington and a few other states in decriminalizing this and making it legal. How, if at all, would the conversation we're having tonight be different if we were having it 12 months from now?
Well, we don't know, and that's part of the problem. There are a number of competing ballot measures that may, you know, turn out to pass. We don't know. But I think that this package of three bills that was, came in kind of at the last minute. There was a lot of last-minute negotiations, is my understanding. And what I see it as, and I think a number of attorneys, city attorneys, see it as the beginning of a regulatory framework in anticipation of legalization.
Amazing, interesting point, which is, the state is considering a regulatory framework. They've carved off a little smidge of opportunity here for us, which we seem likely to jump through. And maybe this is more of a political question, but if you can answer it at all, would we be wiser to do nothing and let the landscape settle out over a year, see what the state comes up with, even if we were not able to then adjust it because we've passed over this deadline?
That is a political question, I think. But from a legal perspective, the advice that we're giving to clients is the same advice that the League of California Cities is providing. And that is, that if you wish to retain local control over cultivation, you've been given a very narrow window of time in which to act, to get something, something on the books. And a number of cities, and the league is supportive of this, are putting a placeholder in place, which is a ban with perhaps personal exemptions, and then agreeing to come back and look at it again to maybe fine-tune it, to have a licensing scheme. But that will enable you to retain local control, because the language is, and I can find it here in a minute if you'd like for me to read the exact language to you, but if you do not have something on the books, if you do not regulate in this area, the state becomes the sole licensing authority. If you do have something on the books, then there'll be a dual licensing scheme. And we don't really have time to set out a full licensing scheme right now, because this deadline is very, very short. If you understand, the two reads in 30 days, and the league is actually, has put out guidelines about urging city city urgency ordinances, but you have to make appropriate urgency findings, too. And so, we're recommending, you know, the belt and suspenders approach that you normally do procedurally, which is a regular ordinance that goes through Planning Commission, because it is a land use. You're operating under your land use authority. But then also, at the end, in February, we will come back with an urgency ordinance in case the timing is such that adoption is not good enough, it actually has to be in effect. And that's the additional 30 days that we really are running up against a timeframe that we don't have that.
Janet, I think, I think in January, we do the urgency, right?
No, February.
Or February, we do the urgency.
Yeah, in February.
Well, to look at this, and for the benefit of the folks that are here to participate in the conversation, is the world of marijuana is a, is, if I was to come up with an analogy, it's sort of like a chessboard. We're here today to talk about one square on that chessboard.
Correct.
And other things will come about as they evolve over the next many months.
I would say that's accurate.
If I may, I forgot one thing. In addition to the town attorney that pointed out, that I forgot to make, really point out, it's really a method, the intent, the whole intent of this item is really a placeholder, to allow you, to give you that flexibility in the future. You can always change it. You can start as a ban, you can always change it. And then, the other thing that's important to consider, at least for discussion purposes, that for tonight, the issue is just cultivation. We're not here to discuss the medical dispensary ordinance that exists currently, or some of the other issues. Really, the focus is cultivation and providing some parameters for the Planning Really, the focus is cultivation and providing some parameters for the planning commission's discussion.
Other comments?
Just one second.
Okay, Peter?
Are you, I would like to weigh in on a discussion, but I just want to ask a couple of questions.
Yeah, let's start with questions.
Sure. So, was wondering, Garrett, if the fire department had weighed in on any kind of fire concerns with marijuana cultivation?
And that's currently what they're developing. So, it's examples like this, there's a dispensable space requirement, that you can't have something within 15 feet. They do have concerns about screening, if you were to have netting or some type of plastic screening the plant. So, fire will be developing their guidelines and their recommended approach to the issue of cultivation.
Then the screening, the issue with the screening is that that itself might be a fire hazard?
Correct. And fire obviously has concerns with indoor cultivation. They prefer to see it outdoor if there's going to be cultivation at all.
Right. And then, in terms of zoning, especially with respect to any kind of commercial cultivation, I'm scratching my head, because most of Fairfax is some form of residential. And there's nothing, zone within the town where agricultural is sort of a permitted use as a matter of, is there?
I think there's at least one location that would be outside of the 600-foot limit for commercial purposes, from a school, or a park, or something like that.
Right. But do we currently have any zoning for agricultural uses?
We do have some related to, what's the best way to describe? We do have a section of code dealing with agricultural type uses and plantings.
But we don't have, like, anything zone ag within the town?
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry. No, we don't have anything.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, so, I had asked for this, you know, as soon as those bills passed, back when I was mayor, because I thought it was really important for us to retain local control. We've seen a number of things coming out of the state legislature where they're trumping local control, the cell towers bill, for example, the million solar roofs, even though it's a great thing, really trumped local control in various areas. So I think, from my perspective, it's pretty important that we kind of put our stake in the sand. And I also want to say Fairfax was really the first entity with the first dispensary, and really the first ordinance for dispensaries. So I think it makes sense for us to really do what we can for this window. But the question I have is, Janet, I'm not sure that you know this, my readings has been that even if we look towards the future for recreational potentially, my readings were that most of those states that now have recreational legal really did not have frameworks in place. And so, a lot of those states were really scrambling to get something on the books. So I see these three bills, which you mentioned, as a way of starting to have a regulatory framework, and get some, you know, the environmental issues, the toxicity, the water diversion, there's so many problems with the criminal cultivation, as well as some of the other aspects. So, am I right that, is that correct, my reading, is that they really didn't have these frameworks, or at least some of them didn't? So it was sort of fast and furious trying to get something on the books?
Yeah, and it's interesting, I went to a seminar, probably a year and a half ago now, where this issue was discussed, and the state of Washington actually sent their sort of chief architect of their regulatory scheme, and he discussed, you know, how long it took to get that in place. But yes, that one is probably one that is an interesting model, because at the state level, it's modeled more on alcohol and that type of regulation. And I think you'll see a huge difference between, say, Colorado and Washington State, big difference. So, I mean, this is, when I look at these three bills and saw the work that was going into them and saw what was happening, I assumed that it was maybe the first step towards developing some sort of state regulatory framework in anticipation of a changing landscape.
Thank you.
John?
Yep. Okay, thanks. Yeah, I definitely think that we need to move to preserve, I think local control is really important, and we can't really let the state be in the driver's seat in this. And we really owe it to our constituents to do that. And, you know, I think in a broader way, a lot of stuff happens first in Fairfax. I mean, we were the first with safeties in schools, we were the first with the dispensary here, we're the first in a whole lot of areas, and I don't need to go down the list. So, you know, it's quite fitting for us to kind of roll up our shirt sleeves a little bit, and try to get something that at least makes sense. I know we have to do it very quick and kind of dirty right now, because we have this hard deadline. And in fact, I think we should be basically planning for the emergency ordinance approach, because that's really a safety net that I fully expect that February 1st might come around, and we won't know for sure whether it needs to be an emergency or not. And so, you know, why not plan for that eventuality? You know, I've been approached by a number of people in the community with their thoughts about this, and I will repeat them without repeating names or anything like that. And maybe when we get into the discussion of the meat of that later, I mean, this is kind of the opening thing, then I can bring that up. Yeah, and the fire concerns are definitely a factor. I mean, that's one of the reasons, along with energy use, that I would prefer to see outdoor cultivation encouraged, you know, not, you know, draw the line, say you can only do it a certain way. But, I mean, we, that rather disastrous fire out on the end of, by the end of Meadow Way, there was, I believe, an indoor growing operation going there, and it was an electrical fire, basically, but, you know, and the occupant lost his life. It's a very real hazard, and I think having a framework that deals with things in an appropriate way, so that it's safe, you know. You know, I hear stories of houses in Arcata going really moldy, and, you know, we can have the same situation here, generating that much humidity inside of a structure that's really not designed for it. But I think we should move forward on this, I'd be interested to hear what our community has to say. And then I think we should work together as a council to get something that works for Fairfax in a boilerplate way for individual cultivation. In terms of, I mean, Fairfax, if you look at what was happening in Fairfax during prohibition, I think that's probably a related model that you're going to see in this community. And if it's willy-nilly and anarchic, that's a place where we don't want to go. I mean, that's not safe for our neighbors, it's not, you know, it's not a good way. So if you make a box that has a framework that people can work with, and that works with people's needs, I think that that's the way forward. And we need to get something passed, too.
Thanks. Janet, I just had a question. So, when we dig into this, we're talking about medical cultivation for medicinal use. So if things come down the pike in 11 months, are we going to be going back to square one in terms of creating ordinances that have to do with recreational use? Or are there things that are going? This is where I think that this gets a little untenable. And I also wanted to say before we went to public comment, that this, we live in a community with very different opinions and needs and concerns when it comes to marijuana, being that the legislation is new. And I just want to make sure that we really do contain the conversation tonight to what it is that's before us, which is just the placeholding for cultivation. And from what I understood from our initial conversation around personal grow.
It's for medical.
For, I understand that now we're talking medical.
Right.
That's what the state legislation is about. But if in 11 months, things come down, are we back to starting again with our own local ordinances in order to maintain the authority locally?
Well, it's hard to say, because we just don't know what's going to happen. But this is addressing the issue that we have before us right now. And then, it's a short timeframe, and so right now, we're just talking about medical. Now, if you did, if you did adopt, you know, a ban with exemptions, it would be exemptions for medical.
So that's my other question. Could you clarify that, please? Because my understanding would be that we're not talking about a ban if we're talking about personal grow, and that's what we'll discuss here, but a potential ban on the commercial piece? And it sounds to me like you're talking about the, a ban with exemption.
Yes. I mean, that's the best way to structure it. It's the clearest way to structure it, so that you don't allow it except in these specific types of instances. And so it would be an across-the-board ban, but exemptions for qualified patients doing personal grows. And we need to address both indoor and outdoor. There's a whole host of issues.
And that would fall all under ban?
Mm-hmm, yes. And it depends, you know, how we write it, but there are a whole host of issues that go along with this. If you're doing outdoor growing, if you're allowing outdoor grows, you need to take into consideration neighbors, you need to take into consideration distance from property lines, screening, the public safety aspects of visual versus non-visual. You look at some of these ordinances, and a lot of places that have exemptions for indoor grows, for example, personal exemption, medical, will say not visible from the public right-of-way. And same thing for outdoor. Instead of having a height limit, for example, on plants, you'll say not visible from the public right-of-way or adjacent properties. And so, there are a number of different things that go along with this, but that's the basic structure that you start with.
Okay, thanks. So, let's go ahead and go out to public comment, and if you'd like to, I want to thank you all for waiting so patiently. I think many of you are here to speak on this, so you could go ahead and get in line, and each of you, how many people are speaking tonight? Two minutes? Yeah, so let's go ahead, folks, and limit this to two minutes, and we'll be keeping the time on the clock down there. They can see it, right, Michelle? Okay, and please just be mindful and respectful of the time, so that everyone has a chance. Okay, go ahead. Thanks, Michael.
Real quick, I hope within this framework, we can also talk about a way that it pays for itself, such as like a TOT, because if you looked at it like a transient occupancy tax for the amount of space that it contains, it might be a very easy way for the town to kind of regulate what's being covered, as a way as being reimbursed for the enforcement of any rules and laws you put in. So if you could please include that in your current framework, it'd give us an opportunity to basically finance whatever you're doing. Thank you.
Hi, thank you, and congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you.
I know I'm not going to be able to make this in two minutes, but I will talk very quickly. First, I want to say that there's a lot of things that you might want to really think about before you start dealing with the medical cannabis for patients. And yes, just to let you know, when you do do legalization, you will have to create your own policy regarding legalization, not medical cannabis, they're totally separate. First of all, I want to say that it's going to be very difficult, I think, for anybody to set any plant limits for patients. The reason is, is because the new bills that were recreated in the state policy are unconstitutional, as applied to me and many other medical cannabis patients in the state. And I'm actually suing the state of California, and I would really hate to see someone in our county have to sue somebody in our county just to get our legal medical cannabis. For me, I'm on federal record for having almost nine pounds. I cannot grow little tiny plants. If this 100 square feet that the state put in, my plants would have to be like the Jolly Green Giant's green stock, okay? Because that's a lot of cannabis, and that's just my cultivation for my cannabis that I smoke, not including my hash, my wax, or my edible. A lot of other patients are very similar to me. And one of the things that has me very concerned is that a lot of people are getting some of these issues confused and expecting patients to cultivate the same as somebody that is professionally cultivating to sell and make money off of cannabis. I would encourage that you be very careful about some of the different things. Yes, definitely you need to worry about fires inside. I do believe that you can create something in the lines of the people that are going to be selling the cannabis, not for individual patient use. You can create a policy surrounding that, and you can also create a policy surrounding, okay, so, there you go. So, I hope that you guys, just say this last thing, I really am coming here to be your friend, but if you create a policy that affects me in San Rafael, I will not only sue San Rafael if they change it, I will sue Marin, and I will sue Fairfax, along with the state of California. I'm also reopening my federal case, so be prepared.
Wait a minute, do you live in Fairfax?
No, I actually live in San Rafael, but my federal case was based out of the city of Oakland, and there I had over 99 plants, so, and I had two caregivers. So, now I'm living permanently in Marin County.
Hi, everyone. I'm happy to be back in the world again, and freed from the federal constraints, and I'm working very hard on helping to reopen the Marin Alliance here in Fairfax, but it may take a few years. And in the meantime, a patient like myself, I have a doctor's approval to grow 99 plants, which barely covers my yearly supply, because I have a condition that needs a lot of medical marijuana. And I will, I wish to be a resource to the town of Fairfax. I'm hoping that we can reopen the Marin Alliance, so it may take some years to go fight for my landlord, now that we fought for myself and my freedom. Now, our landlord has to be free. So, I really would like to see the Marin Alliance bring the blessing of the dispensary back to Fairfax, and bring the income stream back to Fairfax. I think you're missing the boat on banning commercial grow. I understand the legal reason, but with some outlying areas, it might be of great benefit to the town to look into a commercial grow at some point. Also, I don't know if we're going to have legalization in 11 months from now. I'm not seeing a lot of real support for that, and I think we'll be looking at the rules that the state of California has adopted as the template. And I haven't seen a lot of support for any of the initiatives. And the only one who's truly funded is 60 pages and so confusing, it may be rejected, like the voters of Ohio rejected, because it was confusing and seemed weird to them. So I'm looking at medical marijuana and the rules we have. I do know that the Kelly decision, which I mailed to you, Renee, I did email that today, the Kelly decision at the California Supreme Court overturned the ban, overturned SP 420's plant limits entirely, because we went back to the initiative of Prop 215, which has no plant limits, and you cannot change an initiative by any legislation, local or statewide. So in 2010, the California Supreme Court threw out plant limits, because it doesn't adhere to Prop 215, which is 11362.5 HHS now. So, I did send that to Renee.
Yeah.
That is about it for right now.
Okay, thanks, Lynette. Oh, yeah. And please, if you're comfortable, state your name and your address.
Yeah, my name's Brandon Levine. I'm from Cotati, California. I'm actually a dispensary operator up there. I'm the first legal dispensary north of the Golden Gate Bridge. I'm here just in support of regulation. This is an industry that's been going on for a really long time without any regulation. There's so much gray area in there, and right now's the time to get on top of regulation if you guys want to keep control over something that's been going on for a real long time. Now's the opportunity. You guys already had Lynette in here for 15 years, you're pretty progressive. It seems like it's something that's been open to the community. You might not fit zoning for some of the growing, but like, there's other cannabis businesses, such as bakeries, processing, you know, there's a few other things that go along with that, that need licensing and some sort of regulation, so that people aren't cooking inside of their houses. I know there's, there might be some commercial space that would be available for those other cannabis businesses. So don't just regulate out of the other cannabis businesses, because there's a lot of opportunity for your guys' citizens to provide those products. So with that, I mean... So, with that, I mean, I'd like you guys to consider, keep moving forward with the regulation. Thank you.
Okay. Could you tell me, what did you say? The kena businesses?
Kena businesses. So, there's other businesses related to cannabis other than growing and dispensaries. There are 17 different licenses on the state licensing app initiative. So, it's not just growing, and you might want to look at some of these other businesses, and being able to regulate them and allowing them in your city or township. Thank you.
My name's Patrick Crane. I live at 2374 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. First off, I'd like to thank the council for all the hard work you've put into addressing this issue, this challenging issue. I'm the cultivation specialist for Marin Patient Access. My background's in environmental science. I've spent the last several years as a sustainable agriculture consultant, both internationally and locally here in Northern California. I'm also a cannabis cultivator, and I run a not-for-profit cannabis cooperative in the East Bay. I understand that patients' needs vary immensely. This makes creating any set standard very difficult. If we look to other states' cultivation regulations, we have Oregon on the low end of the spectrum, with four plant, allowing four flowering plants. On the other side, we have Washington, they allow up to 15 flowering plants. Currently, Colorado and California allow six flowering plants, as well as California now allowing up to 100 square feet. I would encourage the council, above all, to please keep allowing individuals to grow outdoors. From an environmentally conscious perspective, allowing outdoor cultivation will encourage patients to embrace the use of natural cultivation methods, rather than rely solely on indoor grows, which can be energy-intensive. Theoretically, this could meet the majority of patients' needs for flower consumption, but when you take into account more serious conditions that may require the use of concentrates, there will be need for additional sources of medicine. This is why access to regulated, this is why access to a regulated dispensary is imperative. Other considerations to include is a patient's inability to personally cultivate and the need for a caretaker or collective growing, environmental variables that influence the success of a crop, potential dangers of producing at-home concentrates, lack of personal cultivation areas, and landlord restrictions, as well as possible zoning limitations within the town of Fairfax. These are just a couple of facets of this complex issue. Clearly, there is not enough time to cover everything. I offer my assistance on this issue. I believe Ryan Skalski has forwarded you my contact information. Please feel, yep.
Time's up. Thank you very much.
Please feel free to reach out. Thank you.
Yeah. Appreciate it.
Good evening. My name's Jordan Burns. I am a sixth-generation Sebastopolian up in Sonoma County. Worked with Craig Litwin on medical cannabis policy improvements throughout California. At first, I'd like to start by saying that I appreciate the work that you do. I do, I'm not here as an elected official tonight, but it is worth noting that I represent the West Sonoma County on the Santa Rosa Junior College Board of Trustees up in Sonoma County. The reason I say this is that I do understand the hard work that you, as a body, and your staff do on a daily basis to maintain the balancing act of good governance for all. That being said, considering the new state laws mandating local jurisdiction act prior to March 1st of 2016, to maintain local control, it is prudent that your town is acting now to retain such control. Over the course of the next 90 days, we will see many, if not all, cities in Marin and Sonoma County take this issue up. Just last night, the city of Santa Rosa discussed this issue. Sonoma and Marin County are also both working on cultivation ordinances. Congratulations on being one of the first jurisdictions to agendize this issue. Certainly, we don't want to lose local control, and we want a policy that looks out for the needs of the patients and ensures that you can continue to grow medicine for themselves through this process. The League of Cities is suggesting a ban. There's a much simpler way, and that is to pass a simplified ordinance that allows people to continue cultivating as they have before this law passed, in line with local building codes and new state laws, and following fire recommendations and other such recommendations. I would like to thank you again for your work that you have done. I will leave my contact information, should you need to get ahold of me if you have any questions about other jurisdictions or other things. So, thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and staff. My name is Omar Figueroa. I am a cannabis defense and compliance attorney, based out of Sebastopol, your Cheetah Slow neighbor to the north. And I had the pleasure of meeting some of you at the Cannabis Forum hosted by Marin Patients' Access last month. I am here because I see that you have a great opportunity to create a comprehensive cultivation ordinance for Fairfax. And truly, you can do even more than that, regulating the other licensing types allowed by the state. Right now, you are in a race to pass a cultivation ordinance by March 1st of next year. I agree with the urgency to maintain local control. Here are my recommendations. First, I would compel you to pass a cultivation ordinance that protects the rights of local patients and the general public. To retain local control, please codify that people can keep following the state law as they have been doing since Prop 215 was passed in 1996, and Senate Bill 420 was enacted in 2003. Additionally, you can write in local requirements beyond what the state mandates, that do things such as keep cannabis out of view from a public right-of-way, or behind a lock gate and fence six feet tall. Second, you can then take your time creating a cultivation ordinance that allows some of the 10 different types of cultivation licenses allowed under the new regulatory framework. You may also wish to expand beyond cultivation, and consider the possibility of issuing licenses for testing, manufacturing, and distribution. You can make these all part of the dispensary ordinance you have, or create different ordinances. This process will take some time, and could be well-served with a council committee, including stakeholders and experts. By passing a cultivation ordinance now, you buy the time to create sound regulations. I will provide to the clerk a draft simplified model cultivation ordinance that I shared with former council member Bragman, as well as a sheet listing the 17 different types of licenses. I'm available for your questions, should you have them at any time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And with that, let's go ahead and bring it back to council. With any further questions or comments?
Yeah. Listening, thank you all for your comments, by the way. Very thoughtful. Listening to the comments, I was, and of course, Lynette, it's nice to see, because it brings back memories of sitting actually right here in 1978, or 1998, when we engaged, and I was on the planning commission. And while you were speaking, I was thinking, well, what worked well for Fairfax back then, and that we could remember together, and, and bring to the table on this issue? And the thing that I remember, and please feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, is that we imposed upon your operation a phenomenal number of restrictions. And then, as you demonstrated how well you were running your facility, we relaxed some of those over time. So, I was thinking, while we were doing this, wouldn't it be best if we, is there a problem with the woman sitting next to you?
Okay. We're on?
Yeah. All right. Let me bring it back.
Okay. Where were we?
I was speaking about the positive experience we had with Lynette, and, and her operations back in the late 1990s. And the thing that, as she was speaking, I was remembering how strict we were with her operation, and the extraordinary number of conditions that we imposed upon the operation. And the extraordinary thing about how she operated was, I don't think, and we asked, I think, for some years later, the number of violations, I don't believe that Chief Hughes ever identified for us at that time, that there were any violations whatsoever. And in fact, when the time came for us to review her permit, the number of conditions was significantly reduced. And the lesson that I think that, that provides, as we enter into a new frontier here today, is to, again, be strict, but with the appreciation of the fact that the folks that are working on this will, we trust, result in a, a, you know, a cultivation community that will find us relaxing the strictures that we placed upon it, if we go with a more heavily regulated structure, so that we can expand later on. And I thought, Renee, you raised an interesting point, is that we enter into this environment, on this tiny little part of the checkerboard, even as the larger California community may be poised to legalize this, which would upend some of this conversation, maybe not all of it, but some of it. So, I guess if I, when I was reviewing the Healdsburg ordinance, and I, I think we all recognize that when, on a number of occasions when Fairfax has looked out into the broader regulatory community, we often look to Healdsburg, Sebastopol, Cotati, some of these towns that are similar to us in sentiment, and also in population. And Healdsburg has often provided us some guidance on some of these tricky areas. So, I was reading Healdsburg's, I think, quite good ordinance with particular attention. Now, I think John raised an excellent point about focusing our attention more on cultivation outdoors, rather than indoors, for all of the reasons that you articulated. So, I was looking at the numbers in the Healdsburg ordinance, which is in the chart. We have outdoor three, indoor six. I don't know if the magic number is nine, but it seems that we would perhaps want to move toward the outdoor number, and maybe raise it from three, and dispense, if you will, with the indoor amount. I was, I was taken by your thoughts on that. So, that's my comment on it. It's mostly from the historical perspective of the success that Lynette had, and how it informs our conversation today. Thanks.
Can I ask a question, just to frame this, before everyone makes their comments? So, David, when you speak that way, are you talking about in the context of a, as I was asking Janet about, a ban with these exemptions?
Well, you're raising a good point, because if you look at the chart that was prepared for us, it says local agencies that explicitly permit cultivation of medical marijuana, not in the, well, I didn't see it in the context of a ban, but I think that the town attorney is raising an excellent point, and again, gets back to the thing that we dealt with, with Lynette so many years ago, which is be restrictive, if I can borrow from what she's saying, is to actually impose the ban with exceptions. So, the, it would, a ban would go into place, but the exception deals with what the state law is providing us an opportunity to do today, which is just on cultivation, because I think, as Peter is pointing out, we want to be mindful of that opportunity for local control. We don't want to lose it. I think Barbara's raising it too, and John. So, we, we want to protect our rights, but we're not opening up the larger checkerboard, or chessboard, to filling in all these little squares that some of the other commentators had raised, focusing tightly.
Just one point on your question. So, if you look at the state law, AB 243, so, under the state law, there's all kinds of permitted things, and then the exceptions, exceptions there deal with 100 square foot, and there's another exception. So, I think, my feeling is, and, and I have a few more comments that I'll make later, but the idea of a ban, except personal grows, the idea of a ban against commercial, and then I'll bring up some other comments later, but I think that also fits with the new statute. And so, but I'll bring up a few things later.
Okay. Anyone else? Peter?
Thank you. And thank, thank you, everyone, for your very thoughtful comments. So, you know, it's kind of an overlay. There's the state law, and we're trying to craft zoning ordinances that are consistent with that, but still give us some local to control, so that we can avoid some of the kind of deleterious effects that can result from cultivation, especially if it's done on a, on a really large scale. So, obviously, you know, a ban except for people that have a, a doctor's note or recommendation, you know, that, that's kind of the overlay with the state. I think I would, just in, in the bigger picture of things, I think simplicity and scale are the key to a successful balance for us. We don't want too much cultivation to the point where it creates impacts. And, you know, growing hundreds of plants, or even 99 plants on a property, I think that creates problems, because when you have lots of marijuana cultivation in one locale, it does become kind of a security or crime risk, because it's a high-value plant. So, I think, you know, striking a balance for a reasonable number of plants, per person, per property, is, should be the goal. I also think we should really limit indoor cultivation to maybe two or three plants at most. I don't favor indoor cultivation. There might be one or two people that, you know, have to grow indoors, because they just don't have that option. But we really should encourage, or discourage indoor as much as possible. And there are some really good features of the Healdsburg ordinance, which I think we could, could adopt. I also think that it might be reasonable to allow, let me back up a little bit. So, I think we should be thinking in terms of a per-person, per-plant limit, and then a per-parcel limit, because there might be a situation where you have three or four adults that live on a property, that they each may want to grow this, grow some plants. So, I think a personal limit, and then a per-parcel limit that would work. I'm thinking in terms of about six plants per person, I think, would meet the needs of most people. It may not meet the needs of everyone. And then, just, you know, maybe a 20-plant limit per parcel, so that it doesn't become so concentrated on one locale, that it creates, you know, potential criminal problems and so forth. I also think we should give some consideration to allowing people, again, you know, cardholders, we're trying, everyone involving, you know, bona fide cardholders, to allow a few, some people to grow perhaps on someone else's property that's also a cardholder, because some people may not have an appropriate yard, and may not have enough light, but they may have a legitimate need to grow some plants, too. So, the idea is, you know, maybe a neighbor could accommodate another neighbor who's a cardholder, to grow a few limited plants on their property. I don't think that the screening, in terms of, you know, visually, some of the aspects of the ordinance requiring like a six-foot opaque fence with a lock gate, would, is a necessary requirement, especially if we're limiting the number of plants, because not every property will have a six-foot opaque fence. So, some of the, some of the restrictions, or some of the requirements for the property may not necessarily be appropriate. In terms of the effects on neighbors, I don't think that the odors is, you know, it is a fragrant plant, but it's not, you know, I, I don't think the smell issue is necessarily something that we should try to, you know, really focus on. And some of the other aspects that the other ordinances touch on, I think, kind of make it a little more difficult to regulate. I think, I don't think we should try to collect taxes on this. I think that's just way too bureaucratic. And I don't think we need to get into regulating pot candies, et cetera. You know, that's a food production issue, really. We're just talking about cultivation. And I don't think we should entertain commercial growing in Fairfax. I think it just, again, the concentration of a lot of plants on, on one property creates a lot more law enforcement issues, fire issues, et cetera, et cetera. Keeping it simple, allowing for, you know, the backdoor cultivation of a reasonable number of plants for the most, allow, kind of the most use for the most people, I think, would be the best- I think, would be the best local approach for us to take, so that we're not burdening our enforcement. And I think that will also avoid a lot of the problems that come up around marijuana cultivation. And for simplicity's sake, again, the number of plants, I think, is much easier than square footage. So those are kind of the, kind of overview of what I think would make a simple, enforceable, workable ordinance for us, so that we can avoid the problems of, that we're trying to avoid with any kind of use of any property in residential that's not consistent with residential, but still allow for people to grow a reasonable amount of marijuana for their medical needs.
Can I just ask you a question, Peter? When you say to have someone be able to use someone else's backyard because they don't have the space, how does that differ from a cooperative arrangement?
I'm not sure how the cooperative, you know, rules are set up. But, you know, neighbor A has a big backyard with a lot of sun, and they want to grow six plants. And neighbor B wants to grow some plants, but, you know, maybe lives in an apartment or a backyard that doesn't have sun. So neighbor A could allow neighbor B to grow some plants. And I mean, it would be good to make some allowance for that, because, and again, you know, have a limit on the number of total plants per parcel. But I think that might be, you know, a useful thing for...
Although I did, I did see that in the Sebastopol, I believe, ordinance, and forgive me, it may have been Healdsburg, where they, they very specifically specify that it needs to be, the person growing needs to be the person living at the residence or their primary caregiver. So even the most liberal of ordinances are requiring that that be the person's residence or their caretaker's residence, or that their caretaker is at that personal, that patient's residence. So I don't know how you do partway on the more cooperative, but I just wanted to put that out there. John?
Yeah, a number of thoughts. But going to what your immediate thing is, I mean, regardless of how they've written theirs, I mean, I think that we can think about that, because I think that situation exists. That's one of the things that people brought to me is, you know, it's exactly the example that Peter is using, is there's one person with a secluded sunny backyard that nobody's going to know that they're there. And, you know, that person was growing some, and then there were two other people also growing, and they all had their tag with their license on their plant, so that it was all, you know, you could see whose plants belonged to who. And they weren't caretakers of each other. But in effect, they'd have an informal co-op. Now, I know that co-ops can grow to be huge, and that's something else. And, you know, and I think by limiting it to a certain number of individuals that can be growing together on one parcel might help kind of keep a limit on these co-op things. And if we're, I don't think we should get into the definition of what a co-op is and isn't, and, you know, because who knows? Are you kind of getting into the weeds? One of the things that was, yeah, sorry about that.
Pun intended.
Yeah, yeah, pun intended there. Okay. Yeah, one of the things that was brought up earlier, you know, a month ago when we were talking about this, was some people rent their land. And it was brought up by somebody who had a number of tenants, who may be here, yes, Michael McIntosh. And basically, you know, having the landlord be in on the, you know, getting to approve this or not, you know, I mean, it could be that, you know, they should just know for insurance possibilities, and this is one of the legal things. I mean, does a landlord really have a right to limit?
They do.
You know, people's, well, it's not like having, you know, smoking cigarettes or having a cat in your house, but maybe it is. And I guess that's a legal thing that we need to look at, to see if that, you know, we need to look at that. There are places where there are multiple units on one piece of property. They aren't all necessarily apartment buildings that are towards the middle of town. There's several units, you know, on a parcel that's, you know, farther out. There's more land available. Having a limit of numbers of plants based on a per parcel basis, there are some parcels that are pretty big. So it might be prudent to figure the size of the parcels into that calculation, you know, you know, rather than, you know, have a specific limit per parcel, regardless of the size of that parcel. One of the things that was brought up was definitely, you know, we need to use the term flowering plants for a number of plants, because for the first part of their cycle, they're small, they haven't shown whether they're male or female. And my understanding is that the male plants quickly go the way of male roosters and laying farms and stuff like this. Or maybe not in the same direction, but at any rate, they're eliminated from the process. And so, you know, that, I wouldn't use the word mature, but I think flowering is the thing that we've seen, and that's probably appropriate. Let me see. Fire hazards, we talked about. I think that, Peter's comment about the type of a fence and stuff like that, it seems more geared towards security than visual, whether you can see it from, you know, the, a local, another place. I mean, I think to an extent, that's kind of a laws of nature thing. If nobody knows it's there, nobody's going to go and try to rip it off. But it's all, it just makes sense to codify something like that to an extent. I think that, from what I have read, there's a lot of different strains, and the odor really depends on what strain people are growing. So I think we, you know, in Fairfax, we tend to do a complaint-based system, and probably having some language in there for if, you know, somebody's growing something that is stinking up the neighborhood, and it's really bugging people, I think we have to have some language in there to address that kind of situation, because, you know, sometimes it doesn't smell much, and sometimes, I guess, it does a lot. And, you know, I've gotten some complaints from people doing that. In terms of, I guess, it's kind of a question, I mean, we're dealing with cultivation here, pretty much. And then there's all these different types of licenses that come from the state. Are we foregoing local control on those other types of licenses by just concentrating on cultivation?
The deadline is only for cultivation right now. The deadline is not on anything else. So there is time to deal with other things, but right now, it's on cultivation. And one of the things, and probably one of the reasons why the framework of a ban with exemptions is such a good framework, is that you're covering everything in the cultivation map. So you're not just saying, you know, this type of cultivation, or this type of growing, or whatever. You're covering everything, and then you have your exemption. So at least you're regulating across the board. And that's what we're really trying to do, is to simply show that we're regulating in this area. We're regulating cultivation, period, both indoor and outdoor. And so there won't be any kind of question about, are you only regulating this particular type of growing? Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, okay, I get that. You know, it's just, I mean, I know that people in Fairfax, they tend to try to develop recipes, develop products. I mean, I'm not talking about, I mean, yeah, they're probably doing marijuana that way, too. But, you know, lots of snack foods and stuff in restaurants, and yeah, they try out recipes and try to, we have a lot of entrepreneurs in town that are kind of down home, which is the kind of stuff you're tempted to do in your kitchen. And then it becomes a point where you need to graduate to a commercial kitchen to be safe and to really be, you know, do it adequately. And I just want to make sure that something in the current deadline for cultivation doesn't get interpreted down into the other categories of the state licensing thing. So if that's, that clarifies that, but, and that said, I think we
Are you finished?
need to keep our eye on that.
Are you still going?
It's good.
Okay. Barbara?
Yeah, a couple of things. And I wanted to wait so I could hear what everybody said is, first of all, I like David's idea of being restrictive, and then we can loosen it up later. I think both John and Peter had a lot of good points. And the way I view this is a couple of things, is that, so if we're going with the premise of, and I'm very against commercial cultivation in Fairfax, I would just ban that completely. I don't really think, frankly, there's anywhere you could do it, unless we go into the open space. And I don't think that's where we want to go. Being advocate for open space, I don't think we want to have big commercial grows out there. But, so I would be advocating for a complete ban on commercial. As far as personal, I like the concept of banning, but allowing these exceptions. And so when I was hearing Peter talk, one of the things I liked was, in the Sebastopol piece that you brought in, I'm assuming they're not doing a ban and exemptions for personal cultivation, because they also have in there an exception. And so I'm looking at it this way, is that I like the idea of number of plants for simplicity's sake. And I don't know what that number is, but it's certainly not 99. But I think it's a low number. And so when I heard Peter speaking and ticking off some of the things that he was feeling, might be things we want to include or not, when I was looking at the Sebastopol exception, and it's number E on that little component, where that's really dealing with the idea of somebody needing to grow more. And that exception, I think, is really important to have in there, where there are certain patients who really have special needs. I think Lynette Angel are two of those kinds of patients, is we want to definitely have that in there. And I don't know, since we're talking about personal cultivation and exceptions, that this is an exception on top of that. What we call that word, Janet, there's got to be a better word. But so I'm looking at this idea, is that definitely we would want something like what's in the Sebastopol, which allows an exemption for somebody needing to grow more than whatever the number is we come up with. And then I heard both John and also Patrick Crane talk about the indoor. And I worry, I didn't worry as much about indoor until I heard both of you speak. But thinking about things, like in one of these, there's a preclusion on generators. I could see death from carbon monoxide poisoning if somebody uses a generator. That's a real safety issue. Death to your neighbors as well. But the other issues with the water, the lights, the energy, the fire hazards, and we know that the fire department's going to come out with something. One of my thoughts were, let's just ban the indoor. And with my idea of this exception on the exceptions, potentially, we could allow the possibility of indoor if there's a special case made for that. And that might deal with some of those folks who don't have yards. But, so I'm kind of building this idea of the exception on the exceptions. And then I think what Renee said is really critical, is that it's only supposed to be the person living there, that's the patient or the caregiver. I think that's a really critical piece. But again, I think, I'm not sure about this, but I think if we had a situation where Joe has a big yard, and I think what I heard Peter say is, let's say we come up with a number of nine plants, and I'm saying per household. I don't like the idea of per patient, because I think this exception on the exception, where, let's say we come up with a number of nine plants per household, and then we have three patients living there. With this built-in ability to come to us and say, well, really, we have three patients there. They have qualified cards. It's not enough. Building that exception to allow for more plants, that could work there. But, so I think that stays with the concept of really only caregivers and patients, and picking a number for the entire household as one number, and then potentially allowing a case to be made if there's more than one patient there. We don't have many group housing situations. We do have people sharing houses, maybe three or four. And I find it hard to believe that all those people would be patients. So I just think if we build that in there. The idea of somebody allowing somebody else to grow on their property, I think we should proceed with that cautiously, because I do think that can grow. But I think maybe the potential to throw that out to the planning commission is looking, again, at what I'm calling the exception within the exception, is, and it's got to be a limit. If Joe has a big yard, and his neighbor really doesn't have a yard or lives in an apartment, maybe one person could grow with him, and not to exceed a certain number of plants, maybe two. But those are kind of my thoughts there. I do, see, I don't know a lot about this stuff, but I really didn't know the distinction on the flowering plants. So that seems like a good idea to see if that's something we could deal with. I'm not sure how we deal with that. But then the other things I liked, and I think a couple of the ordinances that we have, is not doing it in front yards. Definitely rear or side yards. While I agree with Peter, having served on the planning commission with him, about the fencing ideas, I really do like the idea of trying to make sure that it's not very visible. We've got a lot of teenagers. We have a lot of preteens. We really don't want this stuff to be very visible. I think it has to be done within reason, but I think we have to find a way to make that work so that, you know, kids aren't walking through neighborhoods seeing a bunch of pot plants and saying, well, this is a great place to get this. Definitely not front yards, but I think if we can do something with screening. And then I think the issue of the rental agreement, you know, making sure that the owner is in agreement, or the HOA, if it's a homeowner association. I don't know how that works. Janet, do you want to speak to that? Because I was thinking about this, and I think it makes sense. But then, on the other hand, I think we, as the jurisdiction, can say it's okay. And I don't know that we want to have that clause in there, even though an owner might want to preclude that as part of a condition of a lease, right? So they can do that, and we don't, really shouldn't get into that as part of this. Right? And then, so I think, even though I think the square footage in some semblances is a good idea, I think it'd be simpler for us to enforce, to find a number that makes sense, within reason. And I do really think we need to think about, one of the things we have to remember is our Fairfax pesticide-free ordinance. People shouldn't be using pesticides, period, in Fairfax. That's not something we support. We ought to be making sure that we're staying within water conservation limits. We don't want people diverting our creek to water these plants, energy use. I also agree with odors. I don't know a lot about that, but I think it could be a stinky area, a stinky situation, so I think we should deal with that. And the other thing I didn't know, in one of them, in Healdsburg, it has some restriction on locations of cultivation near schools and hospitals. And part of me liked that, but I think we're ratcheting down too much. We already have the 600. We already have the 600-foot kind of preclusion, so I'm not real supportive of adding that extra level. So I think I've gone through my list. Thank you, Mayor, for your indulgence.
Okay, so, so many things that I agree with, and I think we've been really thorough in going through this. I have, I have a couple of questions about, and I really agree with the exception to the exception, because as I was listening to Angel, and I've spoken with Lynette, and really thank her for sharing with me a lot of really important information, because this is a lot to learn. And as I stated in the very beginning, there are people with seriously different needs and concerns. I spend a lot of time with the younger community, with younger parents, with younger kids, and with teen abuse, and certainly use of marijuana, which is outside their league, and outside all of our leagues when you're dealing with high THC-level marijuana, and some of the, some of the sort of unprecedented outcomes of abuse of this, of this high-level stuff. So the concerns from that part of the public are coming loud into my ears as I look and review how we're going to do this in an equitable way. So I really wanted to get a handle on these exceptions, and we understand, I mean, Angel, marijuana, medical marijuana is saving her life, and I know that there are many, many, many stories, I know many myself. But if we were to say, let's have an exception to the exception, and we're looking at the foundational, sort of, the ban, are we going to have thousands of exceptions to the exception? It doesn't seem to me that that's going to be the case. It seems to me that what we can set here as simple and clear restrictions and regulations are going to work for the majority of the people who want to grow and should be allowed to grow their own medicinal marijuana. But I, I do want to get a handle on that, because it would be terrible to have these exceptions to exceptions in place, and then have hundreds of people come through and say, here's what my doctor said, I need to have 99 plants, because I think then we would lose the whole point of regulating this at all. My other consideration is in terms of administrating. How do we administrate this idea of having people use each other's backyards? Should that person have, you know, more space and more sun, and something that's not in the front yard?
Have some thoughts on that.
So, and two things that hadn't been brought up. One is registry, and I did mention this to Lynette, and I thought she might freak out, but she didn't. The idea that people would, and it's written in the Healdsburg, in the, actually, I'm sorry, it's the Sebastopol one, under item, it's number, sorry, 14, yeah, 14, under D, where it starts at City of Sebastopol in the staff report. And it states that pursuant to this chapter, caretaker growing medicinal may notify the city of Sebastopol regarding the cultivation site. The names and addresses of persons providing such notice, or of cultivation sites permitted under these regulations shall not be considered a public record, blah, blah, blah. So I started thinking, what if we did, for the sake of accountability and transparency, ask, and obviously it would be optional, because we're not going to go out and tell people they need to ask, to register? So that if we did have a future situation where we were looking at cooperatives of some sort, there would be a place to register that, and we would know that, you know, three people are using this amount of space. Could that be done without completely overtaxing our already taxed staff? Could we have a register? We talked about this very briefly, but I'm starting to feel as though I want to make sure things don't just go insane.
It sounds like if it's voluntary, they would just come out and fill out a form, and we'd have a database. So that, that would be fine.
Okay. And the other piece that I wanted to say, so we, that would be something I would love to put in as something for the planning commission to consider. And then the other piece is, and no one's brought this up, but if we are talking about indoor, which I don't think we should be at this point for multiple reasons most have been said, we have, we have a great shortage of space for people to live in, in Marin County and in Fairfax. We are losing the people who need to have small spaces in which to live, to double up, cooperative housing, cohousing, we're looking at junior second units for housing. And when I spoke with Lynette, Lynette, see, you were so informative, I really appreciate it, I understood that the costs of, of the lighting and what needs to take place electrically to pay for indoor grows is so exorbitant, that if people were growing indoors, it seems as though potentially that could be moving into a little more of a business kind of thing going on. I would like to use that space for housing. So forgive me for bringing it, you know, out into this new kind of place, but I couldn't help but think about it as I was reviewing it, that the room that someone may choose to grow very expensive pot in could be someone's rental unit that would allow them to stay in the community. So I wanted to just put that out there. And then the other piece is that I am the mother of two teenagers. I have extraordinary teenagers, and we communicate very openly, and the parenting part is going really, really well. But I will tell you that the greatest concern we have is teen access to pot, pot and alcohol. And this is not going to be an easy fix, there's no, by legalizing it makes it less, alluring, all that, it's, it's not going to just be magic, everyone's going to be good, and they're going to be smoking safe pot. So I think it's really important that we look at fencing, that we look at side and backyards versus front yards, that we do the fencing really nicely, because the last thing we want to do is like, you know, barricade ourselves in, it's so anti what we want to be here in this community. But I think it's vital that we talk about, not just for crime, but some, I'm imagining the high school where we have a pledge that people take that say, I'm not going to have kids come to my house and serve them alcohol. I'm not going to let your child leave my house drunk and drive themselves home. I'm not going to do this. So what is it going to now be? I'm not going to, I do grow pot, but I have it behind. There's disclosure, and there's something that people want to have a handle on, what we're allowing, how we're restricting, and how we're going to do this in an equitable way. So I think we're making a great start toward doing that, and that's all I had to say. Are we?
Well, listening to everybody's good comments, I think if Garrett has scribbled it all down, and I'm sure he has, then looking at his recommendation, which is to send this now to the planning commission, we can have them synthesize all of our diverse comments and bring back a draft for us to review in January.
I guess, well, Peter?
I have a few comments that I wanted to make about other people's comments.
Well, go ahead.
This is kind of like the value of crowdsourcing, or doing a focus group, you had a lot of information from a lot of different perspectives, which is really useful. One of the things that I think will be important to do is to require every plant be tagged and identified with the owner, because the only people that are going to be growing are going to have cards. And so if the plants are required to be tagged, that makes it easier, if there's a complaint, the police come over, they go, oh, okay, these people have cards, or they go, oh my God, these people are growing illegally, they don't have cards. That would also, I think, facilitate the possibility of like caretakers growing, because the card would be tagged, and you know, and I think there's some language in here, you know, about zip-tied or whatever. And I think that would also allow for neighbors to allow neighbors to grow on their property. If there's like, if the homeowner has like six plants that are tagged for them, and like three plants for a neighbor, I think that would go a long way to allow for that, and be easier to regulate. But I think tagging every plant is really important. The number of flowering plants, I think, is important, too, because half the plants will be female, half of them will be male. The male plants are, you know, don't have any medicinal properties, so I think that needs to be built into the ordinance. And in terms of numbering the plants that you can grow, and the male plants also will destroy the female plants as far as any medicinal properties, because once the female plants are fertilized, they go to seed, and that's the end of the crop. So there's no danger of like, oh my God, someone's growing too many plants before they flower, I think, if they're counted when they're flowered. I think indoor growing, one way, I think we should ban it, except maybe consider that if you want to grow indoors, you have to get a use permit, and that means you have our building inspector go out and make sure that the property is wired. And the reason for that is, we wanted, you know, only, that way only people that really have a real dire need to grow indoors are growing indoors. So I would advocate, you know, an outright ban on indoor growing, maybe entertain an exception if they get a use permit, but we want to make sure that if someone's growing indoors, that it's up to code. So I think that would, that's important. In terms of growing more than the number of plants that we anticipate, I think then at that point, we can require, you know, a locked gate, opaque fence, you know, the sort of the more onerous types of limitations and so forth. But I think it's, maybe make some allowance for growing more than the minimum amount of plants that we need, but it, it, there are not going to be that many more, that many people that will have a need to grow, you know, more than the amount that I think we're anticipating. That'll be the rare patient. And there, you know, again, the number of plants grown on a piece of property, that's where it creates problems. And I think we need, we need to just come up with a reasonable number that works for most people, because, you know, we're talking about, you know, balancing, you know, residential uses with a reasonable ability for people to grow marijuana as needed for their medical needs. In terms of the smell issue, Janet, I'm wondering if that would be just covered by our regular nuisance ordinances, rather than having to kind of craft, because then you get into like the noise ordinance, and you know, does it smell to a reasonable police officer, you know, 100 yards from the property? I mean, it just seems like regular nuisance laws would probably cover that, and that we don't need to create too many regulations around that.
Do you want me to comment on that?
Please, yeah.
I think that the, that situation is one of the factors that goes into calculation of number of plants, and if you're talking about number of plants per, you know, size of the parcel. Also, some of the things that I've seen, so that you don't have an impact on your neighbors as so many feet away from property lines, that type of thing.
So, yes, so, yeah, I think that's a good, that's another very good feature, too, to have a, you know, like a setback regulation.
Right, that helps, helps control as much as you can.
So that, I think that'd be something good to send down to the planning commission, too. So those are, you know, those are some of the things I think that could address some of the concerns that everyone's raising. And I think, you know, six plants per person is, you know, a reasonable amount for most people. And again, I would kind of advocate, you know, a limit per parcel, because there may be more than one or two people that, that have a license, you know, have a doctor's note. You know, maybe 18 plants in per parcel total. So those are my thoughts in terms of what could make all this work.
Thank you. I'm just wondering for clarification. So we may have differing opinions on some of these things, as you're hearing little differences emerge. So what would be the process? So you would take this, planning commission would take it up, they'd come back to us, we'd tweak it around and come to some consensus or a lack thereof?
I think before you leave this evening, I liked a little more clarity on some of the issues, because I'm hearing some different things, and it's going to be too confusing for the planning commission. So, but there's some base things here that'd be good to get, see if there's consensus on-
Could you let us know what those are, and then we'll go from there?
Sure. So what I'm hearing is, maybe the Healdsburg ordinance isn't a bad thing to, to use perhaps as a template, but more importantly, is it the council's preference that we ban indoor grows, or allow it, or ban it, would allow it for exceptions, or allow a certain number? That's what's not clear to me when it comes to indoor grows. I get, I get the concept of more outdoor than in indoor, but I don't know if there's consensus on banning indoor with some exceptions.
Well, I, I think, you know, speaking to what you just articulated, I think, you know, I don't know whether it's a use permit that you would then have, you know, have to go in front of the planning commission for you, and it should be an over-the-counter thing, but, but, yeah, having, having indoors, I mean, I think there's various types of things going on, but if somebody, usually, my impression is, is that if it's indoors, somebody's trying to hide it and create a little factory, you know, and it's a high-tech thing, you know, they got fans, they got lots of lights. And, you know, that's, there's a lot of juice to have running through a little area, there's a lot of humidity built up, and that's the kind of situation that, you know, it's not good for the building, and it's, you know, kind of like a, more of a factory operation than a backyard garden, you know? So I think that's appropriate to-
To ban indoor?
Well, not to ban it altogether, but to ban it with a, an exception that can be allowed with a use permit, that can be an over-the-counter.
And I think there should be a real small limit on indoor growing, too, because really, for all those reasons, and with indoor growing, it's, it's not cost-effective unless you do it on a big scale. And if you do it on a big scale, you're doing it on a-
It's a factory farm.
So, you know, maybe limited to two or three plants indoors and require it to be up to code.
Okay, let's see how other people feel.
One clarification, so there is no over-the-counter use permit, it would be a building permit, and with certain requirements in it, because building permits are ministerial, so there's no-
Yeah, we, we would have something that would be over-the-counter, you know, we would figure that out, just like if we had a fee for it, it would have to come back to you for approval, so.
So one, one thing I would vote for is kind of going back to what David was saying, just starting this out, is maybe we start out really restrictive. What's the harm in just banning indoor, period? Because for us to figure out, I mean, we can always come back to this later, is that to figure out all the safety issues and all that for even a building permit, so you have some checklist, and as I think Lynette pointed out to Renee, indoor grows are very expensive, so even doing it for a few little plants, why don't we just, I mean, my vote would be, let's just ban it, ban indoor, allow outdoor, and then, you know, we're able to kind of work with what makes sense for a lot of people. And one of the things I just want to remind people is, we're only looking at cultivation. Under these new statutes, there will be more ability for people to get medical marijuana, so not everybody has to grow it. And so I think for us, my vote would be just ban indoor, and Patrick brought it up, John brought it up, there's so many safety issues that, why go there at this point?
I'd support banning indoor, too, just for simplicity. I was just thinking of, well, you know, the rare case where someone, you know, maybe make an exception for them, but I think that, that would be too onerous, and the downsides of indoors are just too complicated.
Okay, so Garrett, what else would be helpful?
So I got that, and then it sounds like there's consensus on the planning commission to determine a per-person number with an overall number for, per parcel.
I don't know that we got to that consensus. I, I'm not, I'm not necessarily comfortable with that, because if you've got four patients living in one, on one parcel, you don't necessarily have four times the outdoor space to spread them out. So you've got four people with six plants, you've got 24 plants in one outdoor space, you really have a- six plants, you've got 24 plants in one outdoor space, you really have a pot garden, which, so your outdoor space is pretty much planted with marijuana. So I'm, I'm more inclined to talk about parcel versus per person, and then a limit on, on a parcel. I don't know if you guys are in agreement with me?
So I'm in agreement with that concept. I think that, I'm completely in agreement with per parcel, but I think I brought up, and I think Renee was nodding her head, was that there is the ability to have the exception within the exception for people who need more than whatever that magic number is. So I think, again, going to our simplicity, if we pick a number, or have the planning commission work out that number per parcel, and then have the exception beyond that for somebody who really needs more, then you have that, and that could be one person, or it could be a group home where there's four people with cards. And then we work that out on a case-by-case basis, which hopefully that's not creating an administrative burden.
My, my thinking on the per-person, per parcel, was, you know, in your example, you know, let's say you have four people, put a limit at, say, I don't know, 18 plants per parcel, or, you know, that, not every person can grow six plants, some, some number like that, you know, some, some concept like that. But, so that, that was my thinking, you know, have, have both, both limits, a per-person limit, and then whatever that number is per parcel.
Yeah.
Not meaning that, oh, if there's one person, you grow up to, say, 18 plants, but dig 18 if there's like, total limit, no matter how many people are growing the cards.
As a ceiling. But I, I think, Peter, I mean, there are parcels out there that are a tenth of an acre, and there's parcels out there that are 10 acres. So, and the 10-acre parcels tend to be more secluded, you know, so it's, it's really apples and oranges to an extent. I mean, I think that we should have something that takes that into account.
Right. Well, except, the problem really is the number of plants per property. I mean, if you're, that's why there should be limits, because otherwise, you know, bigger property could, you know, even though it's not as dense, could grow a lot more plants. And that's, that's where the problem is, is the total number of plants being grown in anyone locale.
Yeah, I'm not saying, you know, carte blanche, you know, okay, you got 10 acres, well, you got, you know, a little farm going. But I, you know, if, if the, I, I could see changing it for where, you know, basically, if there's 18 plants in something that, someplace that's, I don't know how big the parcel would be, to have that, that nobody can see it, and things like that. You know, it might be half an acre, or an acre, or something like that. But there might be another parcel that's eight acres, that might be able to have 36 plants and not 18. And it would still...
Well, let me just say, I kind of, I was listening to both of you, and if you don't mind, is just, I think what Peter's proposing is this. We determine that there's X number of plants per parcel, or, per parcel, and that if you grant an exception for over that amount, that there's a maximum upper limit. Is that what you were proposing, Peter?
Well, I, yeah, basically, I mean, we could have a, an application to grow more per parcel, but, yeah, I think...
Yeah. And that could be the exception thing that you're talking about.
Yeah.
So maybe it's better to say, pick the number of plants per parcel, period. And then, like I said, is if there's an exception on the exception, we deal with that on a case-by-case basis, which I know is more work for town staff. But if we try to pick an upper limit, and let's say we pick an upper limit of 18, and then for some reason there is a patient that really needs 22. And we're not talking about 500, and we're not talking about, I think, the people that need 99 would probably be too big for Fairfax. So I think we're better off, my vote would be, stay with a certain number per parcel, and then allow the exception on a case-by-case basis, where people can demonstrate, similar to what Sebastopol has. Does that make sense?
So are you hearing any consensus here? Because I'm still feeling like we need to do...
Set a limit.
Per parcel.
Set a limit on parcels.
And I would set a limit at six, and then deal with the exception to the exceptions, which will be, hopefully, not too great a burden administratively.
If you set it at some limit, and then somebody needs more, and again, I am speaking now from the kind of experience that would assist this conversation, isn't that when you're able to go out and purchase it on the open market, as restricted as that ought, that is at this point? Okay, then wouldn't that relieve us of this conversation? If you're one person, I'll call, shall we just say six? But if you needed eight, that's it. And if you want to just simply say, it's six per person, and then set an upper limit for...
The exception?
The exception, not for the per person, but for the size of the parcel. Because what Renee, I think John is saying, is that, you, you, we've got it, we've got to come up with a number, how arbitrary that might be. So is it three times six? And just say, even if you had four people on, living in a house, that would be it. And that's, that's your number. Now, if you were restricted to six, and you were, and you needed eight, you could go out on the open market, and hopefully purchase it there, at the quality that you require. Does, does that get us to the answer here?
I see Garrett's face over there. Janet?
So what I envision happening here is that you're giving some general guidelines and parameters, and then we come up with something that is also somewhat general, but maybe narrowed down a little bit with options and choices. That goes to the planning commission, they weigh in on it, and then it comes back to you for the fine-tuning, and the crafting, and, and fixing, as it were. And the thing to be concerned about is, and what we're trying to get to here, is a listing of all of the issues. Because what I don't want to see happen with this is that there's some issue that isn't addressed, or at least thought about by the planning commission, because then you raise the issue of, does it have to go back to the planning commission, if they didn't think of that issue? So we're just trying to elicit from you right now, all of the things that we need to consider, and have the planning commission at least consider, and then it will come back to you for this type of fine-tuning.
Sure. And I think we all agree, a ban on commercial. And, and I think tagging the plants is, is very important for any kind of regulatory kind of scheme. And we talked about, yeah, the ban on indoor.
Well, just asking, is there something else?
No, I think I got it. We talked about flowering plants, the ban on commercial, ban on indoor, some number outdoor. I was just trying to limit whether or not you were thinking you liked the per person with a max for the parcel. It, it sounds like there's not complete clarity on that, but I think we have enough that we go to planning commission and see what they recommend related to what your concerns are. Because what we will do is share as many of the comments that we have this evening with the planning commission, so that they can maybe craft something that could work for you. I mean, we have some other things. We're in side yard, maybe security, the tagging of plants. So I, I think we have enough to go by, if you think that's sufficient.
Garrett, when would the, the sort of crafting of how you deal with the exception to the exception, when would that take place? Because I know we're not talking about that right now, but I would really want to make sure that if we're going to restrict, as much as we're starting with the restrictions, that those people out there that have shared their need, and I know that they're, that they're out there, will have some kind of way that they can meet their needs.
Sure. I, I think we, we got the exceptions to the exceptions, and, and other things. So what will happen is, we will actually craft an ordinance for the planning commission to consider in December, and then something will come to the council in January.
But will it come with that level of specificity?
Yes, it will.
Okay.
You'll have an actual ordinance, ordinance to consider.
Okay.
And then you could modify it any way you want, and fine-tune it, and then the second reading would go to you in February. Of course, you may also have an urgency ordinance at that time, but we, we have some time to figure that out.
So a question, the planning commission will take this up this month, right?
That's correct.
Just, I guess, one, I don't want to add more layers onto this, but maybe, Mayor, just one thought is that since they're taking it up in December, maybe one of the things in the January 13 meeting might be to just tick off some of the elements that they've captured, just in the weird event that there's something really missing?
Okay.
I mean, but I guess one of the things we'll have to control ourselves, too, is not having a whole other hearing.
Right, right. And you had to remember, it's a placeholder. Once it's in place, you can always modify it later.
Well, then, maybe I should just withdraw that. I think we've covered the main issues. And I think when you bring it back to us in February, it's really, we, we cannot let the perfect be the enemy of the good. And, and we really do want to have a placeholder that draws our line in the sand. And I think, just going back to something David said, maybe more restrictive than what we would see in the future. But we just want to get this going, so that, all right, so I withdraw, because that's a bad idea, because then we'll be dragging out. Thank you. John?
Yeah, one other thought is, with the, you know, just with an idea to how much, you know, this would be for staff, another way to have this registry kind of situation, or, you know, I mean, if we have all the plants tagged, but I think that's a great idea. But have, you know, as one of the regulations, the fact that they need to maintain a registry on the site.
That is pretty darn onerous for personal grows. I mean, you're just talking about regular...
Well, I'm talking about whose plants they are, and, you know, whether they've got a, a license. I mean, that makes it pretty clear for somebody who's dealing, coming in response to a complaint.
I think that's maybe something that Peter mentioned with the tagging. The tagging leads to patients...
Yeah, I mean, that's, in effect, the registry on the site, you know, and I'm talking about something about on that level. I'm not anything that's onerous on the, you know, that the town would have to maintain there, but it's just available for inspection.
I just had one other question. Barbara, you referred to not being any, doing anything on top of the 600 feet that's already in there? Because in the Heelsburg one, it does. It says, no marijuana cultivation indoor or outdoor is permitted within 300 feet.
Yeah, and I think, you know, part of the, so I worked on this issue for, it's in the Heelsburg ordinance. I brought it up, and I thought about it. So having looked at the maps, and where you can do things in Fairfax, it's very difficult to do anything in Fairfax because of the size of our town. And if we start adding more layers of, you can't do this near a school, or you can't do this near a hospital, which we don't have, we might have nursing homes, such...
I'm, I'm not proposing that at all.
So actually, I withdrew that. I didn't like, first I thought, oh, that's a good idea, but then as I was talking through it, I don't, I don't think it's a good idea.
And so the state is saying 600, is that correct?
Well, you can remember, just commercial, this is personal cultivation. So the Heelsburg, putting their 300, but if you did that in Fairfax, you'd probably eliminate half the residential units in town.
Yeah, you would. Okay, thank you. So are we where we need to be? Okay, terrific. Thank you all for coming. Thank you very much. And the, okay, so, so you will know that the planning commission will meet what date?
December 17.
December 17, here, at 7:00 PM. And then we will take this back up on January 13. And your information is incredibly useful to us, so feel free to send it. And again, thanks for coming.
Oh, yeah.
Oops, what?
Renee, you forgot, we have the resolution for the appeal for 15 Scenic Road.
No, no, I'm not finished with the meeting.
Oh, okay.
Just with this item.
Okay.
Nope, you guys don't get to leave yet. So we'll take up item number 15.
So item 15, as last month, I have not moved, so I'm still right down the street from this, so I'm gonna recuse myself.
Okay. Bye, John. I'm sorry, I haven't found it yet. Do you have it out in front of you?
Would you just like me to make the staff report?
Yeah, would you go ahead and do the staff report, because I can't...
Sure. So the item before you is the adoption of a resolution granting the appeal and approving a use permit and parking variance for 15 Scenic Road. And quickly, as background, you may recall at your November meeting, you held a public hearing to consider appeal of a half-bath restriction created by the planning commission for 15 Scenic. At that meeting, after considering public testimony and other documentation, the council actually directed staff to come back to you with a resolution granting the appeal, and having two deed restrictions. One that you added related to no short-term rentals, and the other was an existing restriction that said it couldn't be used for a second unit. So with that, what we did was, we crafted the resolution, and actually, in your supplemental information, you have a corrected resolution that you'd be adopting this evening. So with that, that concludes the staff report. Other than, the last comment is, the resolution was modeled after the original planning commission's resolution, so that's why it has all the different findings. And the resolution also includes the findings that you directed us to make at the last council meeting.
Thanks, Garrett. Any comments?
I'd like to make a motion to...
Oh, wait, a public comment?
Do you have a comment?
Saying no public?
Okay, I make, there's nobody here. Okay.
I'm learning. This is the learning curve. Practice.
So, so I would like to make a motion to approve, now, this is the amended resolution that we have in our supplemented, supplemental, adopt the attached revised resolution granting the appeal and approving a use permit and parking variance for 15 Scenic Road, APN
And would someone like to second?
I'll second that, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes. And I'm, I'm going to close the meeting, but, and the special meeting. But I wanted to just take one moment, as we adjourn in, in memory. Could you get John, Michelle? Thank you. Yeah, she's going to get him. He's out there talking.
Renee, point of order, are we going to adjourn, and then call the special meetings?
You can, you can open the special meeting during your regular meeting, and then adjourn them both at the same time.
Okay.
Okay, well, then before, we'll adjourn at once. Right, John's here. So actually, let's go ahead and open the special meeting. And I would love to see someone's staff report.
So what the item is, it's on consent counter, but what the item is, it's approving the notice of completion for the Manzanita Road slide repair. It was something that you actually authorized back in December. We bid it out, the project's been complete. Within the authorization, we're also asking that the town manager be able to reimburse the property owner for repairs to their property caused by the mudslide. Originally, the project cost, we budgeted $145,000 in this year's budget for the repair. So far, the total costs are $100,000. The funding actually comes from your TAM Measure A money, that covers $96,000 of the costs. General Fund would pick up the rest. So you're looking at $4,000 for the General Fund, and the General Fund, maybe another $10,000 to repair the staircase that was damaged in the mudslide. I think one of the things to note is, notice of completion is something that we do as statutory requirement. What it does is, it puts everyone on notice, including all the subs, and the contractors, and everyone that the project is completed. And we record it at the county, and then that triggers kind of the, the timeline for anyone to submit any challenges, or, well, I don't know if appeals, but payments or liens on the property.
Okay. Comments? Questions?
Clarification. So the stairway, as you're standing at the slide, is the stairway on the right, or on the left?
It's the stairway that does not exist on the right.
On the right, yeah. Say, they have a railing on the set of their driveway that's...
Right.
Definitely a hazard, because it's not even nailed in. But they've got a piece of caution tape there, and that's about it.
Right.
And that's where the stairway would go down from that point, or whatever?
Yes, yes. And actually, when we put in all the repairs, we, we coordinated with their contractor to where the staircase could be located, and put in whatever the appropriate... where the staircase could be located and put in whatever the appropriate pilings or location for it within our, I call it our rock wall.
Okay. And it appears that in terms of drainage forming on the road at the top of that slide, it's gonna kind of puddle right about where those stairs would be anticipated to connect. I mean, that's where it's gonna, that's the lowest spot on this, on the, it's not really a proper curb, if you will, but there's a little lip that keeps the water from going right down the slide, but it, the way it's set up right now, it's gonna course right around the edge of the, of the repair. You know, and I've seen there's some burlap stuff put in there to keep it from eroding too badly, but that's done in terms of the...
Project's completely complete. That stuff, the burlap stuff will dissolve and everything's fine, rip rap, everything's in there.
So this stairway that goes in, the owner is putting this in and it's just paid for out of this fund?
Yes, correct. This is just confirming the authority for me to reimburse the owner for the cost. And at this point, we actually don't have his actual estimate at this time.
Okay. So we wait for that before the actual number would be there?
So, would someone like, oh, a question.
Yeah. So if I understand this right, we budgeted $145,000 for everything, including repairing the stairway. Costs about 100 grand to fix a road. It's a kind of still open regarding the owner, starts reimbursing him for the staircase. And will there be, I assume there's gonna be some kind of release once the staircase is paid for from, with the owner?
Right, right. That'd be correct. And we're not assuming liability for the staircase.
Right, right, okay.
Can I ask for a motion to approve the notice of completion?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the town manager to issue a notice of completion for the Manzanita Road.
I think we should note just for the record, there's no one in the public to comment.
Oh, there is no one for public comment. So continue, please.
Okay. For the Manzanita Road slide repair project, and authorize the town manager to reimburse the property owner for repairs to their staircase damaged by the mudslide.
In a second?
Second.
Okay, that's Kohler and Lacks. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And before we adjourn, we can adjourn both meetings, correct? I just wanted to take a moment as we often adjourn in memory of someone. There, as most of you know, there was another terrible mass shooting, this time in San Bernardino County. Two gunmen, semi-automatic weapons, 14 killed, 17 wounded, last I looked. And I just think we really should take a moment, one, to appreciate what we have here in this community and have a moment to be grateful for that, and then to open our, really open our hearts and our thoughts to the folks that are suffering right now and hope that we can do something about this, make some, make some forward movement on how we're going to stop these massacres. And so let's just take just one moment. Okay, thank you, everyone, and meeting adjourned.